Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town of Los Gatos Council Meeting of September 4th. Could I have a roll call, please?
Thank you and good evening. Councilmember Barbara Spector?
Here.
Councilmember Mariko Sayoc?
Here.
Councilmember Marcia Jensen?
Here.
Vice Mayor Steely Leonardis?
Here.
Mayor and Chair Rob Rennie?
Here. Now, if I could invite Timothy Yang up to help me with the pledge. Come on around. So first thing is, we're gonna, we're gonna tell everybody a little bit about you. So let's see, you go to Valley Christian School and you're in the second grade. It says you likes to, like to read, that's always good. You, you enjoy solving hard math problems and you're curious about the underlying science in all phenomena in nature. Wow, I, I kinda like that. I'm, I'm an engineer, so I like math problems too, actually. It says you practice swimming and taekwondo year-round. During the fall and winter, you play the Cavalry Church Basketball League. Wow. I'm, I'm not much of a basketball player, I'm gonna leave that one to you, okay? It says also for community service that you exchange letters with friends in the United States, Canada, Germany, Australia, and China to share about your school activities and life in Los Gatos. That's really good. It's a good way to build goodwill, I think. And it says you also visit Kitty Campus where you graduated from to read and share fun science facts with preschoolers. That's all really great. Okay, so if I could ask everybody to stand and ask Timothy to lead us in the pledge, the flag is over here.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. So now shake the Vice Mayor's hand here, and Marcia, she's cleaning her hands for you. And I have a gift for you, and then go ahead and shake Mariko and Barbara. Okay, one more hand for Timothy. Thank you. So now if I could ask Ben Musov to join me up here, we have a commendation. This is for... Welcome. So this is, this is for Campa de Bachi, which first opened its doors in nineteen, uh, February 8th, 1997, after the Albanese family visited Italy and fell in love with the Bachi clubs there, and wanted to share their love of Bachi in Los Gatos with family and friends. Campa de Bachi is still owned today by Tom Albanese and his family, or that's your father-in-law? Yeah, okay. And you, you now have three, you support others now operating three locations in Los Gatos, Livermore, and Fremont. We all, we all love going to Campa de Bachi, but we love even more how generous you are supporting our, our community charitable organizations and your focus supporting local education by providing services, donations, and more. Campa de Bachi provides Los Gatos and the Greater Bay Area, the community, the gathering place for people of all ages and backgrounds to come together to celebrate, eat, drink, and play Bachi. Now therefore, the Town of Los Gatos does hereby render with special appreciation and commendation to Campa de Bachi for over 21 years of service to the Los Gatos community. Would you like to say a few words?
Well, on behalf of the family and the business, I want to thank, you know, the community for all of the support. It really truly means a lot. I know a story tells that it got off on a, kind of a weird start, not knowing what was going to happen, but I think we all realize that, you know, it's a pretty fun place for everybody to hang out. So I want to thank the community, it means a lot, you know, on behalf of Town Council and everybody. So on behalf of the family, thank you all and the, on the community, and we hope to see you soon. Thank you.
Let's get one picture here for Sean. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. It means a lot.
All right, next on the agenda, closed session report. Town Attorney, please.
Yes, good evening. Prior to tonight's council meeting, council met in closed session to discuss labor negotiations. No action was taken that requires reporting under the Brown Act.
Thank you. Council and manager matters, Councilmember Spector.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the last two weeks, I've had no committee meetings, but I've met with many members of the community on a variety of issues.
Thank you. Councilmember Sayoc?
Thank you. Since our last regularly scheduled meeting, the Executive Committee of the Cities Association met to set the agenda for this Thursday's meeting.
Thank you, and my load has been light too, surprisingly. I met the Emergency Operating Area Council met where I represent the West Valley and the South County Cities for the county, and the West Valley Mayors and Managers met, and our topic there was primarily the legislative update from a staffer in Evan Low's office. That's it for me. Vice Mayor Leonardis?
Thank you, Mayor Rennie. Since our last meeting, I had the privilege of cutting a ribbon on a new business in Los Gatos called Vitality Bowl. That was last Friday they, or Thursday they opened, so please support them. I did, I channeled my inner Elvis and had their peanut butter and banana sandwich called the Elvis, I think, was on, that was the title of the sandwich.
Thank you. Councilmember Jensen?
I have nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to the Town Manager Matters.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of reports. First of all, we have extended the application period for Leadership Los Gatos to this Friday, so please visit the Chamber of Commerce website to sign up. And then it's my pleasure to introduce our Transportation and Mobility Manager, Ying Smith, who will give us a brief update on our school bus pilot. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm very happy to be here to give you a quick update on the school bus pilot program. So as some of you know, that custom signup finished last Friday, and I will bring the full report to you in two weeks, but today I want to just give you a preview of the results. So, uh, in the signup period, we received 150 signups among the three routes. Here are the numbers broken down by route. The signup window was from the twenty, August 20th to the 31st. We offer three potential routes for customers to choose from, and two of the routes are approaching capacity. And we can also take a look at the passengers by schools, and we see there are four schools, students from four schools who show interest in using the service. And here are the, those are the numbers. We'll give you the full report in two weeks. So before wrapping up, I do want to take a moment to thank the community for the warm reception and the support along the way. The responses to signup started very strong and stayed very high, and our school district was proactive in helping us send messages out. Safe Route to School Coalition teamed up with staff in, at some of the outreach events, and our, the town's own transportation parking commissioners helped everything from designing the flyers to some of the onsite events. So just a heads up, in two weeks, we will bring recommendation, the recommendations for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Is that all for Town Manager Matters? Okay. Then next up on our agenda is the consent calendar. Would any member of the council wish to pull an item from consent? Seeing nobody. Would any member of the public wish to pull an item from consent? Do, does the clerk have any cards on consent? Nope. Okay. Come, come forward. Just tell me which item and we'll have you speak on it later. Number four, okay, so we're gonna pull number four from consent. So with that, I'm looking, would anybody else wish to pull an item? Seeing none. I'll come back to council, would, uh, Councilmember Spector?
You're still looking left. I'm gonna move to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item four.
All right, I have a second. Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstentions? Accusals? Nope, passes unanimously. Okay, so let's go to item number four then.
Thank you.
Oh wait, do I need to do verbal communication first? Let's do, let's do verbal communication first. So next up, verbal communication. Any member of the public can address us for three minutes on an item not on the agenda tonight? Would anybody wish to address, address us on an item not on the agenda tonight? Seeing none, does clerk have any cards? Nope, so I'll close the verbal communications and then go to item number four.
Thank you, Mayor. As noted in the written staff report that's in your packet, the Cities Association Board is asking all of its member cities whether or not it would like to join an airport roundtable. As noted in the report, the Federal Aviation Administration prefers to work in with roundtables as opposed to individual jurisdictions when addressing issues of airport noise. This particular roundtable would consist of the cities and the County of Santa Clara as well as Santa Cruz, and it would be addressing airport noise due to the runway and other changes to airport approach to both San Jose Mineta and San Francisco International. In your report is the documentation of what the roundtable would do, as well as an estimated budget. So this would be an add to the work program for the Cities Association, and assuming that all, all cities in our county participate, our upfront cost is expected to be $5,000. If there's fewer participants, that price could easily rise to as much as $25,000. Given the workload of the Cities Association, including the prospective regional housing needs assess, assessment and allocation, as well as other items coming before this council, it is staff's recommendation that we not join the roundtable. So that is our staff recommendation, but of course, council is the decision-maker in terms of whether or not you would like to join the roundtable, and the Cities Association is looking forward to a decision by all of its participants this month, so that way the board can make its determinations in October. And I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Questions from council? Seeing none, I'll open up public testimony on this. I think we'd want Lee Cantana up first. If anybody else would like to speak on an item, there's cards that you can find behind the seats, fill them out and give them to the clerk, and make sure you put down what item number it's gonna be for, and you can give them to them anytime you like. Go ahead, Ms. Cantana.
Thank you. My concern is that in the past, Los Gatos has experienced airport noise when flight paths have been changed, and if there's going to be an airport roundtable to discuss possible changes to routes because of existing complaints for noise, that if Los Gatos is not represented within that roundtable, that there's the possibility that flight paths could be changed that will affect us more than perhaps if we had a representative there. And also, I think, given some of the huge expenses that the town does have, $5,000 is a relatively reasonable amount to pay so that our community is represented. Thank you.
Okay, any questions for Ms. Cantana? Seeing none, thank you. Would any other member of the public wish to address us on item number four? Seeing none, I'll close the public testimony. Come back, Councilmember Spector.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question of staff. I thought that what staff recommended in the staff report was reasonable. I also thought that the issue raised by Ms. Cantana is reasonable. So I was wondering if staff could address Ms. Cantana's concern. Well, I, I think, you know, having representation on any community body is, is generally a good practice. I think as we've recently seen, the FAA changed flight paths without any community input, so whether or not community input and participation on the roundtable is gonna make a difference in terms of airport operations, I'm, I'm not prepared to say.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor Rennie. For Ms. Pravetti, are we aware of any of our surrounding communities that are possibly considering not joining this board as well?
I don't know at this point. I think all councils are having similar conversations at this particular time. I know there was quite a bit of discussion at the Cities Association Board, and so that's why they're bringing this question to each individual council. Our Cities Association representatives might have a better sense of their colleagues.
Councilmember Jensen?
So Ms. Pravetti, in addition to the almost $6,000, which I assume is basically a membership fee, we'd also have to dedicate staff time to this project to attend the meetings, correct? And any estimate of how much cost that would be, and what other programs might be affected due to that staff time allocation?
Actually, it would be a council member who would need to be sitting on the roundtable, so it would be an obligation for, for one of you to participate as our elected representative, and then staff support would most likely come from the town manager's office to support that council member who would be on, on the board. But the lead staff would be the Cities Association Executive Director, and they are anticipating hiring a consultant, and so that's why there are dues associated with this particular roundtable, unlike the Rena subregion.
Go ahead.
One more. Just to make sure I understood your earlier answer, that ultimately the FAA determines what the flight routes are gonna be in consultation with the airline industry, I assume in passenger preference and fuel efficiency and pollution control, et cetera, et cetera, and that reading the staff report, it looks like the purpose of the roundtable is that the FAA might listen a little bit more to regional, but not necessarily?
That's my understanding from hearing the airport representative speak as when I was at the Cities Association Board.
And just a follow-up to that, so given that it's the FAA decision, even if the participants in a roundtable were to vote one way or the other for the routes, the FAA need not accept that or implement it, correct?
That's correct. They've got a lot of other regulations that they're trying to balance in providing service. Thank you.
Okay. Maybe I'll just add a little bit to the Vice Mayor's question. So I know in Saratoga, this has been an issue, so their, their council members are very active already in, in the board that's been going on. I think in Los Altos and Los Altos Hills, it's been an issue. May, may also be in Mountain View. I can't recall if Campbell is concerned or not. So that, try to add a little bit to answering your question. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Rennie. I seem to recall, maybe it was four or five years ago, that there were some changes in the flight paths over our community, and then Saratoga became involved. Perhaps that was part of the genesis of this idea for this committee. So I guess, I was thinking of pulling this item tonight, and Ms. Cantana pulled it, and I shared similar concerns that if you don't have a seat at the table, what are the risks of not having a seat at the table? Councilmember Jensen illustrated that the FAA will have the ultimate deciding power on this, but I guess what I'm asking you is what could be the potential risks if, if we're not represented at the table, or do we have to decide on this, this evening? Can we go back and request more information and see who else is signing up? And in other words, if there's more planes flying over Saratoga, and they go to the table and they say, hey, route them over Los Gatos, and we're not there, and they start flying over Los Gatos, do we have a risk like that? Assuming that the FAA agrees with what they would bring up.
I don't know if we have that risk. I think similar to our regional housing discussion that we had last time, you know, there's always benefit in being around the table with our colleagues on issues of common concern. I think the issue is really one of cost-benefit. Is this going to be worth the investment of, of our time, given some of the other priorities that are facing our community? But I, I believe there are other perspectives from the Cities Association that may want to be expressed.
Councilmember Sayoc?
So I appreciate the discussion. So a couple of factors to, to answer, Councilmember, Vice Mayor. So with the fifteen, the 5,000 really is our best estimate. That's assuming all cities participate. There is, it's still unclear whether San Jose, who's our largest city, will participate. If they back out, that could raise our fees up to 25,000. So I think that cost-benefit analysis starts to come into play. Also, by not participating, we're not a voting member. We can be present at all meetings. And one of the things that I've learned, listening to my colleagues that participate in the roundtable, it's very difficult to pinpoint cities when, when designating paths. It's general areas. And so we do have representation from our West Valley neighbors, such as Saratoga. We have Santa Cruz County as well. And so really, it's the, the regions of the area that would benefit, and, and I do feel comfortable that our colleagues in Saratoga would represent us to the best of their ability as well.
Councilmember Spector?
Thank you. I think Saratoga would represent us well, except for the fact that Los Gatos has flight paths that are not necessarily shared by Saratoga. So the question I have of staff is, I'm of two minds on this, I could go either way, but do, if we wait until our next meeting to make the decision and therefore have more information, is that going to be over some deadline? No, we, we can certainly continue this, and I can bring back additional information in terms of the status of the different cities and whether or not they're choosing to participate.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
So based on what Ms. Pravetti just said, how much time do you think would be required? Or is it one of those things, if we postpone it, the further out in time, the more information we could gather, see who else signs up and, and those kinds of things?
The Cities Association has asked us to come to our decision this month, so we would just need to continue it to our next meeting on September 18th.
Councilmember Jensen? Did you have, no, okay. Councilmember Spector?
All right, then I'm gonna, I'm gonna move that we continue this item to our next meeting on September 18th.
Anybody second?
Second.
Okay. Other comments, discussion? Okay, I already had the verbal testimony, so all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? None, passes unanimously. Okay, so now let's move on to item number seven, which is an appeal of an architecture and site application.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Before you tonight is an appeal of a planning commission decision denying a request to demolish an existing single-family residence and construct a new single-family residence at 15921 Roshan Terrace. The subject property is located in the southwest corner of Roshan Terrace and Roshan Court, and is developed as a one-story single-family residence. The parcels immediately adjacent to the subject property are within the town boundaries. However, some county properties are located in the surrounding neighborhood subdivisions along Linda Avenue and Roshan Terrace. The application was forwarded to the planning commission to determine whether the proposed contemporary modern architecture, architectural style was compatible with the surrounding neighborhood subdivisions as it relates to the town's residential design guidelines. On July 25th, the planning commission denied the application on the basis that the applicant had not adequately responded to the towns, to the concerns of the town's architectural consultant, and that the project was not visually compatible with the immediate neighborhood. This decision was appealed by the property owner to the town council on August 3rd. The appellate included six points in their appeal as discussed and detailed in your staff report. Based on the analysis provided in the staff report, staff recommends the council adopt a resolution denying the appeal, upholding the decision of the planning commission to deny the application. This completes staff's presentation, and we are available for any questions.
Okay. Councilmember Jensen?
I have three questions that I might?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mullin. The first question is, the staff report, and you just now referred, used a phrase, quote, forwarded to the planning commission, unquote. And so when I hear that, I think, could this have been approved administratively at the Development Review Committee level, and staff in its discretion sent it to the planning commission though it didn't need to?
An architecture and site application for a new home can be approved at the DRC level. Staff forwarded this based on the concerns of the town's architectural consultant, and some unaddressed concerns based on neighborhood compatibility, so it was forwarded to the planning commission for its decision.
Okay, so you agree with me, it could have been approved at DRC level?
An ANS application can. I, I wanted to make the distinction between the general ANS application and this project in particular.
My second question is, staff recommended approval of the project to the planning commission originally, and And our recommendation tonight is to uphold the planning commission, though it went against the earlier recommendation and denied the project? Is the recommendation tonight just based upon staff's past practice of always recommending that the council uphold the planning commission regardless of its decision?
Yes.
Okay. And my third question is, I believe that I read in the staff report that the staff had determined that the original submittal met height, setback, parking, view shed, privacy, lock coverage, et cetera, objective standards. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, further questions at this point? Okay, seeing none, so I'll go ahead and open the public testimony. Actually, we start with the applicant, the appellate. Start with the appellate.
Hello, good evening.
You have 10 minutes, by the way.
Here is a picture of the extended neighborhood. As you can see, it is secluded and completely enclosed. There's only one entry, which is north onto Linda Avenue from Blossom Hill Road. And as you can see here, there's a great deal of architectural diversity in these houses. Out of the 35 houses in the neighborhood, there are about nine or 10 that are, have, there are about nine or 10 different styles. And it is an eclectic neighborhood. Oops, sorry. Here you can see a mid-century modern house, which has shed roofs. And here is 15902 Rochon Terrace, which is a contemporary house across the street from ours that's in county land. It's in the immediate neighborhood and is currently under construction. Next, I'd like to talk about precedent. 16560 Shannon was reviewed by the council in 2014 after the commission had denied it based on neighborhood compatibility. One of the council members gave the direction that houses on county land do count for neighborhood compatibility. He said that the focus should be on the compatibility of the neighborhood as a whole. Another council member said the commission was too focused on the 225 chart instead of the intent of the guideline. Mayor Leonardo said that it does not matter if a house is in the county or the town, that the commission needs to consider the whole definition of the neighborhood. The next house is 16362 Hilo. It was twice reviewed by the council in 2016 after being denied by the commission two times. In the first council review, councilmember Rennie asked staff about the 225. And Mr. Paulson said to use the surrounding area as well as the 225. Councilmember Sayak said that it is not correct to ignore a house in the immediate neighborhood because it is on county land. She said, it's there and you include it in the determination of what your neighborhood is. Councilmember Jensen said that there is no 225 rule. In the second council review, councilmember Sayak said that there is no plan for neighborhoods that have a checkerboard of town and county houses, that you have to go by what makes sense in each particular neighborhood. Councilmember Jensen said that there's no such thing as a 225 rule and that the commission erred by basing its decision on something that is not actually a rule. And then in the following year, 16386 Hilo Road was reviewed by the commission. The DRC had approved that house, but a neighbor appealed based on neighborhood compatibility. There's only two homes in the 225 that were two-story, including 16362 Hilo, which I just talked about. The commission asked staff for guidance concerning the council's previous Hilo ruling. Mr. Paulson said that, quote, "The 225 is not the be-all, end-all, so you have to look at the broader context of the neighborhood." Regarding the council's ruling on the 225 during the 16362 Hilo review, the commission chair, O'Donnell, said, quote, "The people who set the guidelines are the council. If the council wants to get rid of those rules, they can do it implicitly, which is what they have just done. Or they could get, or they could do it explicitly. It doesn't have to be explicit if there's enough implicit." Commissioner Hudes then said in reference to the ruling, "In my mind, it has been settled. Commission denied the neighbor's appeal and improved the design." So in this case, the commission acknowledged the council set the precedent. The final case is 16666 Topping Way. It was reviewed by the commission in 2017. Again, Commissioner Hudes asked staff, "To what degree do we consider county properties when dealing with mixed county-town neighborhoods for compatibility?" Mr. Paulson referenced the council's 16362 Hilo decision again and said that houses on county land are part of the 225 and should be counted for compatibility. Commissioner Hudes later then referenced that and said that county property should not be disregarded. However, at our own commission meeting, one council member said, "Please explain your home, how your home is compatible with the immediate and not the extended neighborhood." Another commissioner said, "Please talk about the neighborhood compatibility with emphasis primarily on the immediate neighborhood." Commissioner Birch said that design is not compatible with the immediate neighborhood. Commissioner Hanson said that the guidelines specify using the immediate neighborhood and the design is different than anything in the immediate neighborhood. And Commissioner O'Donnell said that he doesn't find the design compatible with the immediate neighborhood. He then says, quote, "And as we all know, that is what we are supposed to consider, the immediate neighborhood and not the larger neighborhood." Commissioner Hudes again asked staff, "How are we to consider county properties when evaluating neighborhood compatibility?" Mr. Mullin said that 15902 Rochon Terrace, which is the county house across the street and the contemporary house, is in fact in the immediate neighborhood and should be considered in the decision. Commissioner Chair Kane said that the contemporary house in the immediate neighborhood is an aberration because it is on county property. Commissioner Hanson then said, quote, "I wouldn't count the county house because we don't have jurisdiction, so we can't use that as a barometer of where the neighborhood could be going." Two other commissioners asked if we would be amenable to making some changes to our roof design, and I said we absolutely would be. However, the commission never discussed it further amongst themselves. And finally, Commissioner O'Donnell made a motion to deny the application based on, quote, "Knowing the definition of the immediate neighborhood." We feel that the following precedents have been made quite clear. The extended neighborhood and not just the immediate neighborhood should be used for compatibility. And houses on county line, on county land do count as part of the immediate neighborhood. In their 16386 Hilo review, the commission acknowledged that the precedents had been set by the council. However, in our case, the commission ignored those precedents. They based their decision exclusively on the immediate neighborhood and discounted the contemporary house in the immediate neighborhood because it is on county land. For those reasons, we feel the commission erred and abused its discretion because its decision was based on false premises. Moving on to the home design, we opted for a combination of functionality and appearance, and we wanted to be very environmentally friendly. The house is neither the biggest far nor the biggest square footage. There's no any technical or objective measures. The low profile of the house preserves the views and minimizes shadows. We will have water conservation systems and will be very energy efficient. We'll have a solar roof made by Forward Labs, made from standing seam metal. It's very environmentally friendly, will not catch on fire. It's very strong and can withstand high winds. And the shed roofs slope away from the street to minimize any potential visual impact. Here's some pictures of what they would look like from their website. The solar panels are integrated into the metal itself, so you don't actually see any photovoltaics. And in my opinion, they look much nicer than traditional photovoltaics, which are just put on top of a shingle roof. The low-profile roofs minimize the height of the house. Using shed roofs saves five feet of height compared to traditional roofs, reduces the mass and scaling, preserves the views of the neighborhood and improves the sightlines and the amount of natural light of the next-door neighbors. Using traditional roofs would force half of the roof surface to face north, and so there would be less energy efficient. Here's some, here you can see that the height of the house compared to its next-door neighbor at 15931 Rochon Terrace, they have a few, as you can see before and after, they have a few windows that are facing our property. And we had several discussions with them, and they were very concerned about their sightlines and natural light. And you can see kind of the before and after, what it would look like with a regular roof. And then here's the neighbor on the other side. And he also said that views were very important to him. And you can see the difference there. In conclusion, we feel that two clear precedents have been established. The extended neighborhood and not just the immediate neighborhood should be used in determining compatibility of the neighborhood. Houses on county land are part of the immediate neighborhood and should be used in determining neighborhood compatibility. In their 16386 Hilo review, the commission acknowledged that these precedents had been set. However, in our case, the commission ignored those precedents. It based its decision exclusively on the immediate neighborhood and discounted the contemporary house in the immediate neighborhood because it's on county land. We meet all technical and objective standards. The only issue is a subjective one. The shed roof shape reduces mass and scaling, preserves views, allows for more active solar panels and improves sightlines and the amount of natural light for our next-door neighbors. The extended neighborhood is a checkerboard of county town land and has no plan. The neighborhood is eclectic and features many different styles, including mid-century modern and contemporary roofs, and contemporary with, which feature shed roofs. And we did an extensive amount of community outreach, and overall, the response was very positive. And I will yield at this time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Questions for the appellate at this time? Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you. You are Mr. Hanser. You didn't introduce yourself when you said so. For the record.
I'm a little nervous.
Okay. Wanted to ask you about your outreach with your neighbors. You imply it in your presentation, but I just want to see if I'm correct in what my interpretation is. You spoke with people, and then did you actually change the design of your house to accommodate your neighbors in any respect?
Yes, we did. So the first thing that we did is we had, my wife held an open house where we invited people over for coffee and cooking and drinks and stuff. And she showed some of the front, the front view of the house. And she did a good job of explaining how the roofs would be sloped back. And then later after, and we got people to sign our letter of support. And then as we got, our architect gave us more updated designs. I went back to the neighborhood several times. If someone wasn't there, I went back again and again, showed the design to everybody who was interested in that and got more people to sign the letter. And we had a lot of outreach. And the main concern that we kept hearing was that of preserving the views, especially the two neighbors, our next-door neighbors on both sides, as well as neighbors over in Rochon Court. And based on that, we lowered the height of the house by one foot. And we're only 25 feet now, but we decided to do that, you know, from 26 to 25 as well. And then also, we had more setbacks from the second story. We set back more to be even more considerate of our next-door neighbors as well and try to preserve their solar access and sightlines.
All right, thanks. And did you make any other design changes, for example, your second-story windows or any other accommodations to your neighbors?
Yes, we worked with staff very closely. And our windows used to be much larger, and we brought those down. And we had conversations in particular with the next-door neighbor on one side at 15931. And based on that, we're glazing the windows on their side and putting up planters on the front patio so that we wouldn't be able to see into any windows on that side as well.
And one final question, if I might. The, you showed the examples of the integrated solar roof?
Yeah.
And I just want to understand, the solar energy panel is actually incorporated into the roof, so there's no attachment that goes on to the roof?
Correct. As far as you can tell, it just looks like a metal roof. It's this really cool new technology, whereas the photovoltaics are underneath.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further questions at this time? All right, seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Hanser. You will get five minutes rebuttal later on. All right, so next up I have, I better put my glasses on. Monica Zuccia. Okay, I can move you to the end. How about Jean Boser?
Good evening. My name is Jean Boser. I live in the modern house that's on county land, right across the street, kind of cat corner. We've lived in the neighborhood for about six years. And as Patrick said in his presentation earlier, the neighborhood is quite eclectic. About five years ago, there was a development done on the east side of our property where they added seven new homes, including the Tudor home. I'm not a big fan of Tudor, but I think Tudor added some diversity to the neighborhood I think is well-needed. As time progresses, we see house styles that weren't there before. I think it's, I think it's good. I think it's showing that the neighborhood is growing and is evolving. And it's also representing the people that live there, very diverse. So I'm happy that they're there, and I'm happy about the design that they're proposing and the changes that they've done to their design. So I'm here to offer my support.
All right, any questions for Mr. Boser? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, I have Davide Giannelli. But that's the architect, so I'm going to put that aside. That should all be, the wife and the architect should all be part of the application team. Next, I have Jeff Tacucci.
Yeah, I live at 15941 Rochon Terrace, two houses down from the proposed house. And I've reviewed the plans and designs. I fully support the design. I like it. I, just like Jean was saying, I think it's a diverse look that adds to our neighborhood. I don't think it distracts from it. I know the thoughts of the roof line, but I really like it personally. I don't think it's going to distract from our house or our neighborhood, and I think it'll actually complement our house.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, thank you. Next up, I have Kim O'Rourke.
Hi, I live a couple houses, sorry, I live a couple houses down from the new development. First, I want to say I have lived there for now 10 years, and I've never seen, we have had a lot of new developments, I've never, never, ever seen somebody go around a neighborhood talking to people. They went around at least three times. I was knocked on the door. They had a, like a cookie tea party, inviting everyone over. So they did everything they could to, you know, basically have the community of that neighborhood and let them know, hey, we're interested in what you feel. So that, to me, was amazing that I've never seen that before. We do live in a very, in my little cul-de-sac, a couple houses down, pretty much about three of the houses are, have been there, like no modernization. So when I see a couple that goes and goes to that effort, and right across the street is a house that looks similar to their house, and that it got denied, and that they're willing to put the money not only into the design, into the outreach of that neighborhood, into looking at other things such as the solar panels, to me, I think it's a blessing in disguise, and I welcome them, and I hope to be your neighbors. I don't, I really don't know them at all, but I hope to know you guys. I think you're going to be a wonderful to our neighborhood.
Let's see if you have any questions. Seeing none, thank you, Ms. O'Rourke. Next up, I have Carl Ryan.
Hi, good evening. My name is Carl Ryan. I live at 15911 Rochon Court. I'm here tonight because I'm concerned that my new neighbor, my would-be neighbor, is trying to circumvent the planning process. The subject property is right across the street from mine, okay? It's already been established by the planning commission that the structure proposed for 15921 Rochon Terrace is not compatible with the neighborhood. The architect of the subject property, by his own admission, has never built a new home in Los Gatos, never has. I've lived in the subject neighborhood for 18 years, since '01. In that period of time, about 10 new homes have been built in the adjoining streets. All the homes have been, in my opinion, compatible with the neighborhood. They all have pitched roofs, they all fit. Even a proposed home on Linda Avenue was recently proposed. I looked at the story polls, I drove right by, I never went to a hearing, I knew it was going to pass, I didn't have an issue with it. The one remodel we did have in our neighborhood was a one-story home that was converted to two-story, and I was here in support of it. My neighbor is here in the audience. He lived at 15930 Rochon Terrace. It's a great job, beautiful home. It's got a pitched roof, it fits the neighborhood. I realize the neighbors can't do anything about developments on county land or an incompatible structure. 15902 Rochon Terrace has been a six-year remodel, not a new structure, right behind my project, my home. All I can say to you is I would request that you honor the planning commission's opinion and send this application back to planning where it belongs. I don't want to see a flat roof design out from my front window. I'm the one with the front row seat for this house. The extended neighborhood doesn't have a say here, doesn't have to look at this house every day. I do. Thank you.
Any questions for this speaker? I have one question for you, Councilmember Ser.
So I just want to make sure, is it?
So, I just want to make sure, is it, is it the roof itself that is what you find objectionable?
I just don't, to me, it looks like he's trying to build Santana Row across from my house. It doesn't fit the neighborhood, it looks completely different from the.
So, it's architectural design? Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Next up, I have Vida Parsi.
My name is Vida Parsi. I live in 15908 Rochon Court. We are not the house right across, but kind of next to the house right across from the proposed property. I'm here today because my main objection is the roof. It's flat and that's what makes it look industrial or modern. Although the, the proposed architecture for this house is beautiful, there's no question about it. It's a beautiful house, it's modern. Our street is a tradition, traditional neighborhood. Yes, there are different designs, as everybody says, but everybody has a pitched roof. Nobody has the flat roof except the extension at the 15902 Rochon Terrace, which is on the county property. And we never, ever had anything to say about it. We didn't even know what was happening. And the remodeling is happening in different sections, so as a whole, it's like a whole new structure, but it never came to Planning Commission or got sequestered into the town because they're doing it in small pieces. In any case, the fact that also this parcel is a corner lot, it's a corner lot, it's on a land that is slightly above the level of the street, it makes it even stick out more and, and overpowers the whole street. As Mr. Ryan was saying, you know, we're going to be the people who have to look at it every single day, not the extended neighborhood. And, you know, in my opinion, one of the reasons that Las Gatos is such a beautiful town is because of the uniformity in this, in its structure, and, and I'm sorry, in its architecture. We owe the beauty of this to the hard work that the members of our Planning Commission do. And I sincerely hope that you withhold the decision to deny the proposed architecture design for this house because that's why Las Gatos is beautiful, because of the hard work that our Planning Commission does every day to make sure all the new structures stay within harmony of the other structures in the neighborhood.
You have a question? Let's start with Councilmember Specter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We received as part of our packet, an email which I believe was sent to you by the applicants on August 19th and to which you responded on August 28th.
Yes.
And it wasn't clear to me, one of the things that the appellants suggested is another possibility is to use a more traditional roof shape and I don't think you responded to that. Do you have a response?
So, they, he sent us another email saying that the Planning Commission had stated they can keep the flat roof as long as the angle is another way or if it was the other name of the roof that they used. The reason that I didn't want to respond in detail about it is because they did come around before and talk about other things to us, but they never disclosed the whole, as far as my understanding was, they never disclosed the whole structure. So, I think that the vigilance that it goes through, that the Planning Commission goes through at first and then the story polls that is put up usually says the story about how a building is going to look like rather than me saying yes or no to a statement that is sent through an email.
All right, so if I understand you correctly, you didn't want to say, yes, I like the concept of a more traditional roof shape because you wanted to see a rendering or something like, and you wanted the Planning Commission to see it?
Yes.
Thank you.
I think you had a question from Councilmember Jensen?
I wanted to ask you the same question that Commissioner Seawak asked the, the previous speaker, which is, is your objection to the roof line or is your objection to the choice of architectural style?
The main objection that I have is to the roof line because I think that's what's really making it look as flat and as boxy and as Santana Road like.
So, if they were to do this same house, but put a pitched roof on it, you would think that was fine?
I think that it's going to be, it's going to blend in more with the rest of the houses.
The same stucco and detailing? All I'm going to do is put a pitched roof on it?
I think that if all the roof lines were pitched, yes, I think it would fit in.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. No further questions? Thank you. Okay, next up, I have, I have the applicant and the architect. So, would any other member of the public wish to comment on this before I give the, the appellant their rebuttal? Seeing, okay, Lee Quintana.
I have not looked at this project in great depth, but in looking at the plans that are shown behind the council and listening to what's been said, I would make just a few I think that I'm not aware that the Planning Commission dealt in detail with this project in relation to objectives and policies of the general plan. When I look at this project head on, it looks like it's well articulated and the second story is well set, set back and it doesn't, the individual elements may be square or rectangle, but the house itself isn't. What doesn't have been considered in the discussion is the emphasis that our general plan puts on sustainability. By changing this roof line, you're probably going to be reducing the sustainability of this house as it's built. We also emphasize views and it appears that the present design would afford more views for the neighbors. And the other thing that I'm keyed into here is that, yes, it meets all the objective criteria, but this isn't a project that needs to be decided upon strictly by objective criteria. The general plan gives us some leeway for subjective criteria in this particular type of application. So, I guess that's, you know, those are my main thoughts. And then my other thought is that we also talk about our town's architecture has evolved over time, but very often, we seem to set a limit on what time period has ended that progression of, of evolution. And I do believe we have to leave some room in our interpretations to allow for a continuing evolution of style.
So, Ms. Quintana, I do have one question for you. Can you elaborate a little more on why, if we change the roof line, will reduce sustainability? You're talking about the yield of the solar cells or the way it's heated or, what did you mean?
Well, if you change the roof line, you're going to have less southern exposure.
To, to the solar panels? That's mostly what you meant?
That's, that's my understanding.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none? Thank you. All right. Would anybody else, other than the appellant, wish to address us? Just hand the card to the, to the clerk and then introduce yourself at the mic for us.
I'll just be super brief.
So, introduce yourself for us.
I'm Leanne McCalliffe and I live on Linda Ave, just around the corner. So, I'm not like a couple of the people who get to see this house directly every day when I get up, but I do live close enough to get one of these to, you know, to give me an opinion. And I just wanted to say that I actually like it. Personally, I like the modern look and I, I think that we've got a very eclectic neighborhood. I'm not really quite sure what all the ado is about, we, we already have one. So, I just wanted to support the people that are, that would like to build the house. That's it.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you. All right, so at this point, I'm going to invite the appellant back up. You have five minutes for whoever you'd like to speak, the architect, the wife, or yourself, all, all in the five minutes.
I'm Monica Zalka. I am the wife. So, this is just a quick comment. I just want to address the comment that the neighbors made. Number one, I don't know where the misconception came from that we have flat roofs. There are absolutely no flat roofs in this house. They are all slope. They mimic the shapes of the modern remodel and they mimic the shape of the mid-century modern that's on Linda. So, none of these roofs are flat. Second point is, the neighbors will have to look at this house, yes. But you know what? They, as we're driving by, they will also have to look at the modern remodel. They will have to look at the Tudor style house, which at some point was controversial as well, but now it's no big deal. They'll have to look at the Spanish, the mid-century modern. And, you know, there's another house on Linda that's had like a slope that's kind of asymmetric and like faded wood siding. I don't know what style it is, but they'll have to look at that. Then they will drive around Los Gatos. And actually, Los Gatos has many, many modern houses. There's even one on Los Gatos Boulevard that I had to pass in order to come here. So, you know, modern architecture, contemporary architecture, isn't an aberration. It's, it's not something new and weird. It's actually something that people are looking forward to. They're, they're looking for these houses, searching them, either building them or trying to find them wherever they can because, you know, they answer a need for simplicity, for aesthetic and functional simplicity. There's nothing redundant in these houses. Everything serves a purpose. And more often than not, these houses also apply the newest technology, you know, the solar roofs, the brackets on, on the framing in order to compensate for horizontal movement during earthquakes. You know, the, the metal roofs, they're not going to catch on fire, internal sprinklers, you know, and once again, the metal roofs, you know, they will send winds up to 140 miles an hour. That's why we put these things on our children's schools because we know we're going to be safe or the children are going to be safe there. You know, we also have water conservation features, we have great water tanks and so everything, I mean, has been extremely well thought out and planned for this house. But the same kind of thought and effort was applied to the neighbors in the neighborhood. By keeping the house at less than 25 and a half feet, okay, we're preserving views. We're preserving the views for the two-story house in the back. We're preserving light access and minimizing shadow on the house on the side. And also, we're preserving as much as possible the views for the houses across the street, you know? So, it's a combination. Like this is a really well thought out project, both for the functional house itself, but also for the neighborhood.
I just have a couple of notes that I made while the speakers were talking. One is, I did send Vita a rendering that shows the, the idea that we had for the hip roof style. And we also sent the, what the TCA had proposed, which was just taking the, the shed roof form and, and sloping it to face north instead of south. And the reason that we responded to that and said that that's probably not advisable is then the entirety of the shed roofs would face north and we don't have any solar panels at all. Another thing that I'd like to say is that there's, in terms of being on a corner lot, the residential design guidelines, which I've read three times, has one sentence about a corner lot and it's talking about, if you're a corner lot, you should be a little bit more cognizant of your size and bulk and setbacks and stuff. And we worked with, it doesn't say anything about you now have to have a more conservative style because you're on a corner lot. And also, all the houses on our side are on a hill going down, so all the houses that are on our side are elevated compared to where, where they are kind of more in a valley. And also, I just wanted to point out once more time, even though I've said it, is that we also have to consider the next door neighbors. This is going to, raising the roofs is going to have a negative impact on them and they're, they're most confronted by this house and their sight lines and natural light would also be negatively impacted. That's, and then as Monica said, if they're confronted by our house, they're also confronted by the contemporary house that's exactly across the street and they have to pass by that every single day and it's, they're back, they're, they're neighbor right behind them. So, to say we don't fit in when we're exactly the same as something across the street, which they're confronted by all the time, I, I don't think is true. Thank you.
Okay, let's, you're going to probably have some questions? We'll start with Councilmember Specter.
Thank you. I'm going to ask you the same thing I asked Ms. Parsi. You had sent her an email and you referenced alternative roof designs. One has the slope facing forward, another talks about a traditional roof, roof shape. Are you saying that you sent her a rendering with this email because I can't find it?
Okay, I, I'm not sure which, which one that you saw. I, I could, I'd be happy to forward an email chain to you if you want. So, I initially sent her just an, an email saying, you know, we got denied by the commission, so now we're looking at possible backup plans of different roof shapes. One thing that the TCA said was to shit, to take the shed roof form and slope it forward. And another thing that we came up with, with our architect, was a more traditional hip roof. What are your thoughts on this? We, we'd like to get input. I think it was at least 10 days later, she responded and said that she would, that she thought that the, the traditional one would be better, but she had a hard time visualizing it. So, I sent her the, the, the rendering that our architect had. And then I, I never heard back from her after that.
All right. And I'm assuming, but you know what they say about assuming, that that drawing, rendering, was not sent to the town by you?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions for the appellant? Councilmember Sack.
Okay. So, in this email that Councilmember Specter was referring to, one option was to change the slope so it goes towards the north. We've heard testimony that by doing so, you reduce the sustainability. With the traditional hip roof, what, what is the trade-off with changing to that format?
Okay, that's a good question. So, we've gone through, through many different reasons. The one is that it would make it about four or five feet taller and so it would have a negative impact on the sight lines and the amount of natural sun that the next door neighbors would have. It would increase the mass and the scaling and the height. The house would seem more imposing, the views of the neighborhoods would get worse, the amount of shadows would improve or would get, would get bigger. And the amount of active solar panels that we had would be cut in half, so the house would be less, less sustainable.
Go ahead. Another question?
And looking at the exact motion that the Planning Commission approved, it was denial based on the compatibility that you've discussed, but they also reference Larry Cannon's letter and specifically, there were several bullet points on page five that they specifically highlighted. What are, can you speak to those?
Sure.
And why those recommendations were not folded into your final design?
Sure. So, the, the TCA reviewed this twice. The first time, he had five recommendations, including the window size and some other things. And one of the things that he, he did say was about the shed roofs. He thought it was not compatible with the immediate neighborhood, which is one thing that we are contending against. But he did, but he further on had a quote, which we've put in before, that of all the five things there, that would be the one thing that he would keep, assuming that it was compatible with the immediate neighborhood. And so, we decided to, to continue on that path. And then we made lots of changes with staff as well. And then he came back with brand-new things that were all together and we were advised that, that this kind of thing tends to happen and that you could, if you feel that it is justified, that you could just respond and, and make a case that you feel that what you're doing is, is correct and okay. And I wrote a very detailed letter saying that. One of the things was that all of a sudden now, he didn't like the fact that we had wood siding, which he never mentioned before. We made the case that lots of houses in the neighborhood have wood siding, so we did that. I don't remember some of the other ones. He was talking about recessing the windows back or recessing the garage door back, which he never mentioned before. And so, we, we decided to just respond to those.
Okay, I do have a question at this point. So, there's some discussion of changing to the, the hip roof on this and I'm, I'm struggling with what, and possibly maybe you can, you want to invite your architect up, but if you stuck a hip roof on this, do you, do you have some kind of abomination architecture that doesn't fit into anything? But if you stuck a hip roof on this, do you have some kind of abomination architecture that doesn't fit into anything?
Well, maybe there are-
Or do you end up having to change the rest of the look also?
Again, you want things to be cohesive, and I'll invite Davida to come up in a second. But, you know, if you designed a Tudor house that had, you know, pointed roof, and someone said, hey, put a flat roof on it, it's not going to look, you know, good. We're trying to, we did this in response when we were despondent, when the commission said no to us. We were trying to think of, to do something. And of course, we love the original design, but we also need to have a house, so this is why we came up with that.
Hello, everyone. Davida Giannella, architect. So yes, as Patrick mentioned, we did study different evolutions of the roof, including a full, round hip roof, so a traditional roof. I did, however, two different studies, one with the typical pitch that the other homes have, four and 12, even three and 12. And as Patrick mentioned, on the width of the house, we will gain four to five feet, reaching almost the maximum height. That was pretty massive. And as you mentioned, Mayor, it really created division between the top, the roof, and the rest of the house not being cohesive anymore. I then studied a more horizontal development with a lower pitch hip roof. So same traditional shapes of the other homes, but a lower angle. That kept the same, a very similar look as the current presented house with horizontal lines, but with increased slope. You'll still be able to see some of the roof material, instead of just the gutter lines like we do now. So that version actually worked well even with this type of architecture. It was more horizontal, kind of a very Frank Lloyd Wright, very extended roofs, low pitch slopes.
And that would still be a metal seam roof, but a hip, hip look to it?
Correct, exactly.
No pun intended. Councilmember Jensen?
No, hip.
Actually, not a hip roof. The picture that we have behind us, the renderings, that's your original design, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and that's your preference?
Yes.
Okay. 1.4, section 1.4 of our residential design guidelines, community expectations, one of the bullets is that architectural details should be consistent with the individual architectural style. So is the roof that you depicted here on your original, do you consider that to be consistent with the individual architectural style that you have selected?
Yes, it actually has two sides to it. The low slope and continuous shape uniformity of it goes with the modern architecture of the house. However, because the design guidelines from Los Gatos required to really study in detail the fascia, the trims, all the details of the surrounding homes, I made sure that we add a more articulated fascia detail with different prints. You can almost see it, even though it's very dark in this print, where there is not a square box roof. There are at least three different setbacks to the roof, between the material, the fascia, and the soffit underneath. So that articulation, to me, spoke of the existing surrounding homes that have a lot of wood detail to it. So it's modern, but it really mimics those details that perhaps are missed to the general public just looking at the rendering. But we have a detail in the plans on a large fascia detail that shows that, how articulated it is.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Specter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When, I didn't meet with you, but when I met with the appellant, I saw a drawing of a different roof line, and it's not in the packet. And I think it might be the one that you were describing, which was your preferable alternate. Do you have that somewhere so that we can all see it? Because we're sort of like talking through the holes in it.
You're right.
If you could put it up on the overhead here, everybody will be able to see it.
Thank you. That's the one you showed me. Now, to the speaker, when you were talking about the two alternatives, is this one of the alternatives? And was this the second one you mentioned?
It is the second one, the lower-profile hip roof.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Councilmember Sack.
So I just want to make sure I understand. So what I have behind us is the preferred design, and this is the proposed hip roof that was created to accompany the email to Ms. Parsi?
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay. Okay.
Yes.
Councilmember Jensen.
Couple of questions. What, if any, differences in height is there between this preferred design and this design?
So at the ridge level, we gained a couple of feet. However, the apparent height is not so obvious, because we eliminated a clear-story window that was in the original version, which wouldn't fit with this other style. So we eliminated it, which I wasn't happy for even sustainable reasons, because the window is operable, allows the house to cool off in summer, has a lot of advantages even for illumination inside the house. So yeah, we gained two feet, but it's really in the middle of the house at the ridge top, where here, the highest point is more visible in the front.
So this alternative is higher?
Yes, because of the angle of the roof.
My second question is to the sustainability. What, if any, solar efficiency do you lose with this second alternative versus the preferred alternative?
As Patrick mentioned, about, I would say, 40%, because basically, we're splitting this roof in two parts instead of sloping continuously in one direction. That was, the original one had the optimal angle to face southwest. And in this other one, obviously, we're splitting equally all around the house. So we have a more fragmented surface where to put photovoltaics, and again, some of the orientation wouldn't work. So I would guess about half would be lost.
Thank you.
I have another question now, looking at this. When I look at it, it looks like you've lost some articulation, and the mass seems a little bigger. The lower roof is continuous instead of being broken up. Do you come to the same conclusions also? This has less articulation, looks even the upper, the upper roof where it breaks compared, again, our perspective is slightly different, so it's a little tough to tell. But it seems like generally, there's less articulation also on the upper roof with this design.
Yes, first of all, I think, looking at the perspective, it's been distorted by the projector. The house appears more elongated than it really is. It's correct, though, we did extend the lower roof to encompass the whole house, because one of the concerns I tried to address was the perceived roof lines. Obviously, when you walk at street level, you know, regular height level, you'll see mostly the first-story roof. So I thought by making, extending that horizontal, high-pitch slope roof on the first level, that will really tie to the surrounding homes. However, you're right, it eliminates a lot of the articulation, it makes it more uniform, in my opinion, less interesting. And the same happens on the second level, because, as I mentioned, we eliminated a clear-story window. There was a focus point, and now it's more blended in, has less diversity.
And maybe one technical question, maybe you can't answer. Since the solar cells are integrated here, are they, it depends, I ask the question because I'm trying to determine really how much loss of solar there is. In a traditional solar cell, you can put like a microinverter or an optimizer on the back of each one. And so it can be optimized separate from the rest of the roof in pieces. But I don't know the design of this integrated roof. It may all run off of one, what are called maximum power point trackers, in which case you really do have a problem if there's at different directions and angles.
I would suspect so. However, this is a very new technology developed in Palo Alto, very recent, so I'm not familiar with that as far as that technical problem.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no more questions for the appellant, I thank you, Mr. Giannelli. Thank you, so I'll close the public testimony portion and come back to council for questions of staff, discussion, motions. Oh, yeah, let me, yeah, thank you. I keep circling it on my pad, so I don't forget. But let me start with disclosures. Councilmember Jensen?
I've driven the neighborhood several times and met with the appellants.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I met with the appellants last week to discuss the project.
And I also met with the appellants and rode my bicycle through the neighborhood. I feel that that way I can get a better feel for it than just driving. And Councilmember Sack?
So I also met with the appellants, I walked the neighborhood, and I've read all the correspondence provided.
Councilmember Specter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have driven the neighborhood, I met with the appellants, and as I indicated before, I saw during that meeting an alternate drawing, which we've now all seen.
Thank you for sharing that. So let's go back, Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to bear with me while I go through the residential design guidelines and ultimately, I hope, get to a motion, if I might. Our residential design guidelines were finalized in 2008, and they were the product of a lot of work. And they state their purpose right up front in several ways in chapter 1.2. But one of the bullets says, "To provide a greater degree of project review and approval predictability." Bullet number six is streamline the development review process by more clearly communicating community expectations to property owners and developers. So unfortunately, that didn't work in this case, because though the home met all of our objective standards, it still went through a process where it could have been approved administratively, but was not, went to the planning commission, and was denied essentially for a choice of style. And so we find ourselves here tonight determining whether or not a denial based upon a choice of style was an error or abuse of discretion based upon the design guidelines, which is what the planning commission relied on. In the introduction to the design guidelines, it says, quote, "These guidelines are not intended to establish or dictate a particular style." With respect to community expectations, there are 11 bullets. Among them are, "Designed with architectural integrity on all façades, constructed with high-quality materials, architectural details consistent with the individual architectural style, respect for views, privacy, and solar access of neighbors, structures designed to be energy and water-efficient." And we've heard testimony tonight that this structure is all of those things. Chapter 1.6, "How to Read Your Neighborhood," refers you to Appendix A, which is an entire manual that the guidelines contain with charts and illustrations on how to do that. But one of the things it says in the introduction is that Los Gatos will continue to change and evolve for many decades to come. A diversity of architectural styles throughout the community will continue to be expected and valued. With respect to, I think Mr. Hanser noted it, neighborhood patterns, the only reference to the corner lot is in 2.2.3. Maintain a strong street presence on both street-facing façades, but not that it's held to any other expectation but that. I.e., don't put a blank wall on one corner and a nice facade on another, but have a wraparound architectural style, which this house does. Chapter three concerns itself with building design. And in the introductory portion to that, it begins with, quote, "Homes in Los Gatos come in many forms, sizes, and architectural styles. This diversity is one of the features that contributes to the town's unique identity." Goes on, and then it says, describes various styles that you see in Los Gatos, Victorian, Spanish, Craftsman, suburban, all of which you see in this neighborhood, which we've heard testimony is very eclectic. And it says, "Ranch-style homes may occupy one street of a larger neighborhood, while newer contemporary homes may occur around the corner or down the street." 3.2.2, "Design for architectural integrity. In general, it is best to select a clear and distinctive architectural style, pure contemporary, rather than utilizing generic design elements or mixing elements from different architectural styles." So don't put a hip roof on a contemporary building. 3.11.1 and 2, "Privacy and solar access, minimize shadow impacts and privacy intrusions on neighboring residences." We've heard testimony that that has occurred. 3.11.3 and 4, "Design and plan for energy efficiency." They say, quote, "The town supports the use of alternative energy sources." In bullet three, it specifically says, quote, "Integrate the design panels into the design of the roof, avoid a tacked-on appearance," unquote. These panels are the roof, so there is no tacked-on appearance. With respect, again, to Appendix A, the "How to Read Your Neighborhood," it calls out various architectural styles that are seen in Los Gatos. The page that is titled Architectural Styles II has a picture of a modern house, as identified style in Los Gatos. So my motion, based on all of that and the testimony that we've heard tonight, is that we should grant the appeal, find that the planning commission did err in its interpretation of the residential guidelines by not considering the full neighborhood, by not taking into consideration the contemporary house across the street that is in the immediate neighborhood, and by failing to consider other aspects of the house, including its energy efficiency, its solar access, and the fact that it meets the other objective standards, and has avoided the normal complaints for this kind of a residential design. And those are, it is too high, you can see in my yard, it affects my privacy, it cuts down trees, or it otherwise affects my view sheds. None of those are the objections to this house. The objection to this house is that it's contemporary. And I would hope that we would make decisions that are based on real, practical, actual effects to people. And I understand that we talk about styles in certain contexts, obviously in a historical context. Certainly, if there's a very uniform neighborhood, where all the houses are the same. But in this neighborhood, the houses are not the same, and they've been remodeled over time in different styles, in different ways. So we don't have an entire neighborhood that's all single stories. We don't have a neighborhood that's all Spanish. We don't have a neighborhood that's all Craftsman. We don't have a neighborhood that's all ranch. We have a neighborhood that's kind of everything, including a contemporary. So I would hope that we would not dictate to our residents what their taste should be, but that we should take into account all the factors surrounding a particular residence, read our guidelines as a whole, and come to a conclusion that this house actually fits within our guidelines and is compatible with its neighborhood. So my motion would be that we grant the appeal and adopt the resolution that's contained in our packet at attachment eight, with conditions of approval in Exhibits A and B.
Okay, I have a motion with a lot of explanation. Would anybody like to second this motion? Vice Mayor Leonardi?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Further comments? Councilmember Sack?
I'll be supporting the motion. And I do want to just reiterate that, as we have said in previous hearings, that county land that is in, within the immediate neighborhood, let's just make it absolutely clear, that counts. 225 is one aspect. I know that was heavily considered in the planning commission decision, and that we are looking for the entire residential design guidelines. And one thing I also want to stress is that credentials of an architect, this is just one thing that stood out. It shouldn't matter whether or not the architect who is licensed has done work in Los Gatos. He's licensed, and that should never be questioned. So I just wanted to call that out as well.
I'll go ahead and comment, then. I'm also going to support the motion. Generally, I like to find compromises, but it seems to me the compromise here is a change that, as I said before, will potentially make an abomination out of the architecture. So I'm very hesitant to go that direction. I also will echo that when we're talking about the 225, this is visual. If there's a house that's in the county, you still look at it. You still drive by it. You know, people don't close their eyes when they go by a house that's in the county. And if this discussion hadn't, if this application hadn't occurred, people might not even know it's in the county. There's many streets where people don't know which houses are in the county. And it's part of the visual when we drive by. So I agree that houses in the county should count, and we should address our residential design guidelines to make this clear in the future. Go ahead, Councilmember Specter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a hard one. Often, we have hard ones. And we look at, as you can tell, different council members look at different factors. What you shouldn't be doing up here is thinking, well, which house would I like better? Because that's not what our ordinances say. They don't say, well, you choose the house that you, council member, would like better. So we're not doing that, or we shouldn't be doing that. And you can tell which of the lawyers up here, because the maker of the motion had, you know, referred to the design guidelines. And the design guidelines, even though they're called guidelines, do have a significant amount of mandatory language. Ensure that the new development is compatible. Homes will respect the scale and character of the immediate neighborhood. Use roof forms and pitches that are similar to other houses- Use roof forms and pitches that are similar to other houses in the neighborhood. Now, I agree with, I agree with the council members who said that we could, we should, could use in our consideration the house that is being remodeled in the county. I agree with that. However, and that's probably the, the structure that I looked at most diligently when I was in the neighborhood. I wanted to pay a lot of attention to that. And it is there, and it looks as though it might mirror this drawing, rendering behind me. However, having said that, the rest of the neighborhood doesn't look like that. And so if you're looking at what the neighborhood character is, it's not that one house that's being remodeled in the county. Another factor that was of significance to me, and again, they're not going to be linear, is the fact that there were so many people here supporting the application. There were some that were not supporting the application, but that there were a significant amount, number that were supporting the application. I was, I was impressed by the fact that what I call a seven-member Planning Commission that does not think alike on most issues voted unanimously against this application. And I do also look at the code, and the code requires us, in this motion, to say that the Planning Commission erred. So as I'm sort of like listening to myself talk, not knowing where I'm going with this, I am not going to support the motion because the motion is premised on the Planning Commission erring, and I cannot make that finding. And I should also say, because the appellants are sitting here, there was an excellent presentation by the appellant when they went through the bases for the, the finding on their part. I thought it was very well done. So they can be poster child of how to make presentations to the council because it was very well done. But even having said that, I'm going to be voting against the motion, but you're okay because you got four people up here voting for it.
All right, any further comments? All right, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
No.
Passes four to one. Councilmember Spector opposed. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to item number eight, which is going to be introduction of an ordinance to amend the town code regarding animal and fowl. And let's, let's give them 30 seconds to clear the room, those that are being noisy and leaving. Hopefully, the noise will stay in the foyer.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Lynn Lamprose. I'm the deputy town attorney. And we are here for the introduction of this ordinance, Chapter 4 of the Los Gatos Town Code, entitled Animals and Fowl. We have been here before. This ordinance was first brought to you on June 19th as a first reading. It had been sent, I had sent it to San Jose Animal Care and Services, our contractor for outside animal control, on May 1st, and received no comment back. It went forward on June 19 and passed first reading. And after that time, I received significant comment from the director of Animal Care and Services for the City of San Jose, as well as members of the public, who wished to be heard on it. There was significant public comment, and therefore, we determined it was appropriate to take the ordinance off the track and start over. I was very appreciative of the ability to look at this ordinance again and listen to public comment, listen to the residents, and listen to the director of animal services. It was very valuable, and I appreciate the chance to make this ordinance more responsive to those concerns. The ordinance is being revised for a variety of reasons. There's significant outdated law in it, and impoundment timeframes, and references to laws and county contractors that we don't use. It needed updating for a variety of reasons, but it specifically needed updating for enforcement issues regarding dogs and care and keeping issues regarding dogs. And that was very critical, something I've been dealing with for five years as I've been the deputy town attorney here and did not have good tools to deal with those issues. It also, well, it, I had initially wanted to update the bee and livestock portions of the ordinance. Those issues engendered a lot of discomfort in the public. And one of the primary residents was unavailable to really meet and discuss the issue of bees until after September 1st. And wasn't going to be satisfied if I merely adopted the ordinance she drew my attention to for money, sirino that she liked. So, since it was going to derail the entire ordinance, and since we do not get very many complaints about bees, or chickens in particular, I felt it was appropriate to remove any revisions to those sections and keep the ordinance as is, exactly with regard to bees, as it's been for 20-plus years. With regard to chickens and livestock, I simply indicated a section that the animals should not run at large on public or other people's property. That's pretty pro forma. And cross-reference to Chapter 29, which contains the few regulations that really exist for the keeping of chickens and livestock. So it's essentially unchanged. It might be that in the future, we do, are able to open this up and revise that code again. But it was critical to address the dog issues and the feral cat and wild animal issues. And this ordinance has already been delayed by a couple of months, and I've been working on it since the spring. So given the fact that there really aren't the complaints, we proceeded. The biggest issue, obviously, has turned out to be the feeding of feral cats. First, let me just say with regard to feeding of wild animals, that bird feeding in a backyard is still allowed. I did get some questions about that, and as long as it is, I adopted San Jose's ordinance, as long as it's an appropriate feeding structure that prevents wildlife from getting to the food, it's, it's allowed in the backyard. Wild animals are not allowed to be fed pursuant to state law. That is an easy amendment to our ordinance. We did not have a code section that said that, however, which did tie our hands to some degree. But that is against state law now, and now in our code, or will be in our code if this is passed. However, with regard to feral cats, we have a situation in town, in multiple areas of town, not just one area, although one area is most well-known, where there are significant problems as a result of improper outdoor feeding of feral cats. Now, I have gotten very few complaints over the years with regard to feral cats, per se. The complaints I get are mostly about skunks, raccoons, cockroaches, and it is the nuisance consequences of improper feeding of outdoor animals. We do not have, contrary to some public comment, we do not have a code section right now that allows me to address this. We have a littering code section. And frankly, in Chapter 11, frankly, the definition of littering of garbage and rubbish wouldn't really contemplate cat food, not as it's defined in the code. We have the out, you cannot feed wild animals. Even if I just passed, had that in this ordinance, I think I would have a burden of proof problem in court when someone said I didn't intend to feed wild animals. I intended to feed cats, and they can't help it if the wild animals ate the food. So I really have my hands tied right now to address the issues of the improper outdoor feeding. What is the situation that we have? We have residents that you've heard from before and in public comment attached to the reports, who can't walk to their cars at night, who can't walk their dogs because of the significant amount of skunks, raccoons, cockroaches that are outside eating cat food left around their property. But I hear the public, and I hear the desire for a humane management of feral cats. So I attempted to craft an ordinance that bridges the gap. That, contrary to many people's expectation or thought, and I realize that word gets around on Nextdoor that isn't always accurate, this ordinance does not outlaw the feeding of feral cats for the purposes of rescue or trap-neuter and return work. My dilemma was how to balance the residents who wish to humanely take care of outdoor cats with the right of residents to live free of the nuisance consequences and health and safety code violations that those consequences bring from improper feeding. Consequently, I attempted to draft an ordinance that says, "You may feed feral cats on your own private property without permit, without an end point in time, without an underlying purpose in terms of," it doesn't have to just be for trap-neuter and return, "you may feed feral cats on your own private property. You may feed feral cats on multifamily private property with the consent of the owner and all tenants in possession thereof." I understand that that's a stumbling block for some of our residents. I think it's fair when you are exposing people who live somewhere to, to consequences of your actions that people be on board with it. But I understand that that is an aspect of the ordinance that is not popular with some. There's a third alternative, however, which is that you may seek a permit from the town manager for the purpose of feeding outdoor animals, feral cats, for rescue work or trap-neuter and return work. Largely, what I saw in public comment was that people were saying, how could you not allow trap-neuter and return, or trap-veterinary treatment and return, TVR, TNR? How could you not allow that management? It has been proven to be effective in reducing population over time. It is humane. And so, in fact, we are allowing it. But we are putting some regulation and restriction on the method for doing that. We are seeking accountability. I do not think that responsible feeders of feral cat community could object to wanting to weed out the irresponsible feeders. That gives everybody a black eye. It does them no favors in their work. The requirement in the code is that a person would have to be affiliated with a legitimate organization. This does not mean that it has to be the organization itself. They don't have to wear a badge. They, it is somewhat loosely drawn so that it can be evaluated on a case-by-case basis, but it is contemplated that somebody comes in and says, "I'm with alleycat.org. I've got traps from them. I've got the flyers that instruct me on how to feed, and I want to go and feed outdoor cats for the purpose of trap-neuter and return." That's affiliation. We want to see that somebody is, is practicing the best feeding practices. And all of our reputable organizations around here, Best Friends and Furry Kitties and all the various letters that I got from organizations, teach people how to do these things responsibly, and we appreciate that. Folks would want to go to the town manager and say, "This is the area that I want to feed at. This is the methods I'm going to use." And there are some suggested guidelines that we put in there. Put out only the amount of food that the cats can eat in 30 minutes. Remove all food after that point in time. That is, of course, the critical component of proper outdoor feeding. The permit is contemplated to be a six-month permit. It can be renewed. I understand that to establish a cat's reliance on the food source so that people can develop the trust and get the cats to come at a certain time, and then they could effectively trap them for the purpose of ear-tipping, veterinary treatment, neutering, you have to do it over some time. And that is allowed in this, in this permit process. There was one comment from the director of Gatos de los Noches, which is a feral cat and community cat organization. And she pointed to the City of Santa Cruz, which has an ordinance. And her number was wrong. It was 8.16.040. And it said that "It shall be unlawful for any person within Santa Cruz to intentionally feed and water the feral cat colony unless that person furnishes the director of animal control with a signed statement agreeing to the following conditions: register, regularly feed, regularly trap, have them spayed and neutered, have them tested, ear-tip, vaccinate." So it's a registration requirement. To me, that's akin to the permit requirement that I'm trying to establish to develop accountability. I don't think that, I realize that some advocates want to be completely unregulated. They're doing the right thing. They don't want to have to go through any hoops. I am trying to create a balance between some accountability, some ability for us to know what's going on, to inspire the people who want to do this to do it the right way, and not making it so difficult that nobody wants to do it. But, you know, we don't let people take driver's ed and just drive. They have to get the license, too. So this is a step to help people show us that they know how to do it the right way. And that way, if there's a problem area, and we can say, is there somebody out there that's permitted to deal with this? Let's contact them. Can they help us? There's lots of skunks. What's going on? If there's a problem area and there's nobody permitted in that area, then we know, this person is not permitted to do this here. We could take enforcement action, or they're doing it the wrong way. I think there are many people who wish there to be no feeding allowed, even for TNR. So as with any compromise, I'm sure I'm making very few people happy. But I am, again, trying to give us the tools for enforcement while at the same time respecting the good work of the trap-neuter and return, trap-vaccinate and return community. I think that the last holdup is going to be the folks who simply want to feed to sustain the outdoor community, not for the purpose of trapping and neutering, or trapping and vaccinating, or trapping and getting veterinary care. I think it's a dangerous slope to say that this can be done in perpetuity with no regulation because people move, people get tired of it, people go on vacation, people leave. And I think that I'm trying to craft a situation where there is some regulation and accountability that we can rely on as a town, and that the people who are doing it the right way can rely on as well. I think that most of the comments that I've seen regarding the pro-feral cat feeding and sustaining of the community and, and the trap-neuter and return, take into account the cats, but they don't take into account people who are adversely affected by improper feeding. I have to do that as enforcement for the town code. And this is the balancing act that I think gives us the tools we need and still respects the desires of the community. Thank you. I'm here for questions.
Thank you. That was a very thorough explanation. I can't imagine we have any questions at this point. Okay, Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you for your very thorough presentation. My, my question is actually procedural. I just want to understand the procedural posture we're in because on June 19th, we passed an ordinance by first reading. We were going to come back for a second. Is, are we done with that now, and we're just doing this from the get-go as though we've never seen an ordinance before?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, with no questions, I'm going to open the public testimony. I have a thick I have a thick set of cards here, so feel free to be crisp. We're going to start with Mary Hoover. And after Mary is going to be Sylvia Carillo, and then Kristin Janicki. Go ahead.
Mary Hoover, I'm a 30-year resident of Los Gatos. I work for a rescue. I'm actually the cat curator for the Dancing Cat. I read the packet, and I just want to say I support TNR with responsible community cat feeding. I did not see, when I read through the regulation, I don't know if that was updated since I had seen it, but I didn't, it sounded like when I read it, it was, "You can't feed any cats outside, even if they're your own." So that's how I read it.
Okay, any questions? Seeing none, thank you, Mary. Next up, Sylvia Carillo.
Hi, I'm Sylvia Carillo. And this is the first time I've been here.
Welcome.
And so I've lived here in the Bay Area.
Pull the microphone down a little. There you go.
Sorry. I've lived here in the Bay Area for 57 years. I was born and raised here. Eleven of those years, I've lived here in Los Gatos. Since 2015, the cat lady, I won't mention her name, but I think we all know who she is, has been feeding the cats and thus has created chaos here in Town Terrace neighborhood off University Avenue. I've heard from my neighbors that there are others who are feeding the cats at 4:00 a.m. in the morning, 3:00 a.m., 5:00 a.m. It's incredible. Since 2015, there's been an increase in cockroaches, coyotes, skunks, raccoons, and cats. I'm not able to walk at night like I used to when I first moved here. I used to walk all the time downtown, go get an ice cream. I can't do that anymore, and I haven't done that probably for the past eight years because the animals and the crows are fighting and making a lot of noise as they fight for the food. And boy, have you ever seen a skunk and a cat fight over that food? It is really something to see. I've seen the cat lady feed the cats many times as she leaves food on the property at 141 Town Terrace and 200 Avery Lane, which is located across the street where she currently lives. The cat lady leaves food in other places throughout the neighborhood there. I have confronted her and have told her to stop many times throughout the last three years, but she has refused. I have pleaded with her like you don't know. In 2015, I called the police, and the police called code enforcement. Dolores Salsar came and witnessed the cockroaches and the cat food on the street curbside. There were cans of cat food and milk with the cockroaches and skunks eating the food. I was in the middle of the street with my boots on and spraying the cockroaches. You can just imagine that whole chaos. I showed Dolores where all the cat food is being placed along the curbside, in between the cars parked and underneath the cars as well. I told Dolores that when my neighbors have guests over, their guests are not able to leave due to the skunks and cockroaches surrounding their vehicles. It was a horrible sight. So if you can imagine not being able to get to your car at all because there are skunks all over and then parking your car and walking out and stepping all over the cockroaches.
Please wrap up.
Please, if you can pass this ordinance to stop this, I would appreciate it. I would like my neighborhood back.
All right. Well, it looks like you have a question from Vice Mayor Leonardis.
Hello.
Thank you, Mayor Rennie. So you're describing the situation about how many cans of food are being put out every, what, evening, morning, late morning?
I've seen them out in the early morning. I've witnessed a lot, so I've seen the skunks fighting and the cats. During the summer, she's putting them out around 8:30 in the evening.
How many are there? Is it like 20 cans? Is it five cans?
There's a lot of cats. I went with my neighbor Sarah one evening. We were there in our neighborhood in front of our house, in front of our complex there. And I couldn't believe, I stood in the middle of Town Terrace, and I was like, "My God. I have never seen so many skunks and cockroaches in my life. I was born and raised here. I've never seen this in my entire life until now. I hate living like this. I wish I could move, but I can't afford to because we are on rent control in that neighborhood. But I want to move so bad, I can't tell you." Because when I go home tonight, my house is going to smell to skunk. I got them all over.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out and telling us your situation. Next up, I have Kristin Janicki.
Members of the council, my name is Kristin Janicki. I'm the Director of Shelter Operations at Humane Society Silicon Valley. We participate in a county-wide coalition with five of the other larger animal welfare organizations in our county. Our coalition is an inter-agency partnership that serves to save the lives of companion animals in Silicon Valley. We collectively work together to save lives across our community, and through collaborative targeted spay-neuter programs, we decrease the number of animals that are being born that would otherwise end up in our shelters. We were able to briefly review the code changes proposed in 4.10.085 and 4.60.050, and we recommend that a subcommittee made up of industry experts is best suited to provide wording for this code to ensure a comprehensive plan is made, not just surrounding TNR efforts, but ongoing management of feral colonies. When I was the Director of Medical Operations at Paw's Chicago, a large Illinois animal shelter, Chicago enacted a carefully thought-through comprehensive ordinance in 2007 for the managed care of feral cats and was able to drive down the feral population by 20%. Through careful consideration of an ordinance, a sustainable and effective solution for managing feral cats is attainable.
Thank you. Let's see if you have any questions. I don't see any questions. Thank you. Okay, so next up, I have Joanne Jacobs, and then Diana Grubbs, and then Denise Yurati. That's probably not right, but Joanne.
Hello. My name's Joanne Jacobs, and I'm the Chief of Operations at Humane Society Silicon Valley, the largest privately-run animal shelter in Santa Clara County with an annual intake of over 6,000 animals. And we provide free spay-neuter vaccinations and ear-to-been for feral cats in Santa Clara. On behalf of HSSV, I'm here to urge the council to change the proposed ordinance for Sections 4.10 and 4.60 of the town code addressing the feeding of animals on public and private property, specifically feral cats. Scientific studies, as well as decades of hands-on experience, show that appropriate and managed feeding of cat colonies, coupled with a trap-neuter return program, is the only proven strategy to end the breeding cycle, improve the cat's health, make them better neighbors, and address the concerns being legitimately raised by Los Gatos residents about the increase in wildlife sightings in high-density housing areas. But successful programs require cat colony caretakers, animal control, rescues, and other shelters to work together. In the last week, the code has been changed from a feeding ban to a more managed approach with great intent. Unfortunately, those changes are not sufficient to appropriately reflect how the various people and organizations in the process need to work together to manage the feral cat population and end the wildlife concerns. There has simply not been enough time or a process to get appropriate input from the animal welfare experts and the community at large on the ordinance. We reviewed, we got this current draft this morning. We hope that you will allow us and others in the animal welfare fields to provide changes that will ensure that the ordinance will be effective in balancing humane treatment of feral cats, support and education of the caretakers, and the valid concerns of the community around the attraction of wild animals. Thank you.
Any questions? You have a question from the Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor Rennie. It seems, and I'm probably naive on the subject, but enlighten me, it's kind of counterproductive to trap a cat and then neuter it and then put it back out there. Why wouldn't you just hold it and then have somebody come adopt it after it was neutered and all that stuff? And I hear people laughing, and I knew that would happen, but it seems like you're going through the effort to capture the...
It actually helps control the animal colony itself. So if you put a spayed or neutered cat back into the feral colony, it actually prevents, it takes up a spot, shall we say, in the food chain in terms of the colony itself, and you don't actually have more cats that come in. If the food is there, if the food's in the community, whether it's provided by caretakers or otherwise, you'll get more feral cats in. So it's just a never-ending cycle to say you can take them and remove them.
So...
I may not be the most articulate one on this, so...
That was helpful. One follow-up. So if you attempted to remove the whole colony and get them neutered and put them up for adoption, and then you took away the food also, wouldn't that eliminate the whole problem completely and then ultimately have a more humane treatment for all the animals involved?
I have never heard of that working anywhere. That's all I can say to that.
Well, in the city of the cats, you know, this might be a new idea. Thank you.
Councilmember Jensen.
Just a follow-up. You haven't heard of it working. How does it fail? In your experience, what are the things that make it fail? Well, just for you, have you ever seen my cousin Vinny? You and only you?
Yes. I said, I haven't heard of it being tried to actually capture...
So you don't know whether it's failed. You haven't ever heard of it even being tried?
Correct.
Okay. So then the other part of my question is, assuming you go through this process that you're talking about where you educate people, you have a managed, you have a whole group that's working with it, you do all this management, what if you do have this rogue person who's not educated, who doesn't do anything, who just feeds cats? Then what would your suggestion be with respect to skunks, coyotes, raccoons, cockroaches?
Yeah, I don't think anyone is disagreeing that there should be the ability to enforce code around the proper feeding of feral colonies. And I know that the Director of San Jose Animal Care and Services provided wording to that effect in terms of what could be put into the code to give enforceability. That is not what's in the code today.
Thank you.
Okay, I see no more questions. Thank you, Ms. Jacobs. Next up, I have Diana Grubbs.
Mayor Rennie, Vice Mayor Leonardis, Councilmembers Jensen, Seach, and Specter. My name is Diana Grubbs. I have lived in Los Gatos for 19 years, and I have done mitigation work as a volunteer in areas with issues similar to those in the Town Terrace and Avery neighborhood. My efforts have always addressed both residence and animal considerations. I've always tried to come up with a balanced approach and have had success in making neighbors who have had these situations very happy with the results that we've achieved. First, I want to thank staff for incorporating language recognizing the need for continued legitimate trap-neuter return efforts and that have been in effect in Los Gatos for many years. However, the ordinance as currently written still incorporates problematic and not fully vetted language that will adversely affect residents, their properties, and the community cat population in our town. I refer to, number one, the unworkable 100% approval requirement at multi-unit housing properties for a town resident to assist their community in addressing the homeless cat population. Number two, the lack of clarity regarding a cumbersome and prohibitive permit process. And three, the section regarding registration with rescue groups. These sections all have very decent starting points, but they need to be fleshed out. And there are missing points that would go a long way towards solving the problem before a TNR program is even needed. In the section regarding abandoned animals, language needs to be added to require owners of multi-unit properties to require pet cats to be spayed and neutered as well as microchipped so that if abandoned, they do not contribute to the community cat population, and they can be tied back to the owner for enforcement.
Please, no clapping.
We need to put more thought into our ordinance and consider what other jurisdictions have done to successfully balance the management of proper TNR practices while allowing the freedom necessary to act as a global citizen to address these problems in each of our own neighborhoods. I respectfully request that council not approve this ordinance for a second reading and instead create a committee or task force involving stakeholders and experts to address both the situation at Town Terrace and the writing of the ordinance. We have experts who have made themselves available to us, including Humane Society, a few rescue groups, Best Friends Animal Society, and in our own backyard, we have John Cisarelli, the head of San Jose Animal Care and Services, who our town contracts with for animal control services. He is knowledgeable in TNR practice and legislation, lecturing across the country, addressing organizations and municipalities that are looking for guidance on writing their animal ordinances.
Thank you. Let's see if you have any questions. Vice Mayor Leonardis.
Thank you, Mayor Rennie. If this council were to appoint a seven-member committee called the Feral Cat Committee, I'm just making that up, and would you consider the totality of the problem and include all the stakeholders, assuming that you were a member of that committee, and try to resolve the greater issue with the other wildlife involved as well?
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no further questions. Thank you. So I guess I should just make a comment. When people are speaking, we ask that you don't clap or boo or, you know, it can get out of control. So if a speaker asks for people to raise hands or something like that to show support, that works, but we don't want to get a situation where people are booing or clapping or, you know, in this case, obviously, it's positive, and you always like positive reinforcement. But, you know, there could be others that want to do a boo, and we don't want to get that kind of behavior in our, we want to have a very inviting place for speakers to come speak. And so positive always is inviting, but at the same time, that would then mean the negatives need to occur also. So it's better if we don't do that. Please. So next up, this is the one I, Denise Yurati.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Rennie, Vice Mayor Leonardis, and Town Councilmembers. My name is Denise Yurati, and I am a board member of Peninsula Fixer Ferals, an organization aimed at lowering the number of free-roaming cats in our neighborhoods through outreach and education and through spay and neuter. On my own personal time, I have also trapped, fixed, and rescued on my own time and dime over 1,500 cats over 16 years. Again, I say with my own time and dime because we are volunteers. I first want to thank staff. I really feel that Lynn has listened to our concerns and has tried to incorporate to the best of her ability both sides of the spectrum. I really want to recognize that. I think that's been, she's really done a tremendous job. However, I do have concerns, as others do, regarding the current language that we just have had a chance to see over the last couple of days, mainly the permitting process. Over the last decade, truly, there are only a handful of trappers in Santa Clara County trying to address 2,000 residences' requests for service. So what we have done over the last decade is incorporated a component with community involvement to solve this community problem. Honestly, these cats were not created by the feeders or the trappers. They were created by folks that would abandon them or let their cats roam outdoors unfixed. So one of your ordinance changes has to do with roaming cats outdoors found twice are going to require a spay. I really appreciate that. That helps to actually solve the problem at its root. The permitting process, however, is very specific that was added. I think that was, if I can be very specific, it was 4.60.050. It refers to this work only be done by TNR trappers or those affiliated with the rescue group. That's not realistic. You have about five of those folks that come out in your community and do that. When we get those kinds of calls, we try to engage the community and empower them to use the resources available to them, which is trap rental, the free spay-neuter services provided by your agency, Santa Clara San Jose Animal Care and Services, and we talk them through the process. If there's a kitten that needs help or one that's just been hit by a car and the sibling's still out there, we can't tell that person to go down and get a permit or affiliate. By then, that kitten's gone or dead or what have you. We need instant response. So although I think the changes that we have seen over the last couple of days are in the right direction, I'm going to basically mirror the comments of others that we'd like to see a committee or stakeholder review process be put in place to bring HSSV, John Cisarelli, who's nationwide known for his ordinance writing, and people come all around to mirror, use this as a model. to mirror, use this as a model, and also incorporate residents, because the feeding that's happening at Town Terrace is unacceptable. This is not a feeding practice we promote, and this woman needs education, outreach, and redirection, not criminalization. Thank you.
Okay, let's see if you have any questions. Seeing none. Well, actually, I do have a question for you. The, this process committee that, that's been asked for several times, I guess the, the question really is how long, how extensive, what, what is the vision of this? As you can see that, you know, people are really getting anxious to, to get on to solving some of the problems we have.
Absolutely. Actually, there's a very similar process up in Mountain View, and I was on that stakeholder committee. City of Mountain View did a, what they called a wildlife and community cats. We don't refer to them as feral because a lot of them are just abandoned stray friendlies or people's indoor/outdoor cats are considered also in this community of free-roaming cats. So that stakeholder committee got together. It had to do with residents, Audubon Society, we had rescue groups, we had city legal team there, we had HSSV and the local jurisdictional agencies. So we had representatives, because honestly, I've done a lot of mitigation on request by our animal control agency to go out and help communities such as Town Terrace, and property rights must be restored. There's no question about that. People have a right. I heard the angst of this individual who has tuna and food. I wouldn't want to live like that. That, that has to be addressed, and there's ways to feed appropriately that are actually already outlined in the San Jose Animal Ordinance, or San Jose Feeding Guidelines, that if this ordinance just said to feed per those guidelines, and if you fed outside of those guidelines, you could be cited, problem solved. This person is feeding outside of those guidelines, and they need to be redirected. So the stakeholder committee should involve the residents that have concerns, and respectfully have dialogue back and forth how these things can be addressed. Mainly, it's through a development of a comprehensive cat management program or plan at that site, the site with the problem, and we look at things like engaging the residents in resolution, we look at how the feeding's being done, whether or not comprehensive trap-neuter return has occurred there, which I believe in this area it has not. In fact, we just got a call about a mother and four kittens from that very area, so obviously, all these animals are not spayed and neutered and controlled. To your point, Councilmember Leonardis, we do remove friendly cats and kittens for rehoming to immediately reduce the number. So that is a component, but there are some cats that are just simply not friendly enough for that to occur. So those, those are fixed and vaccinated, microchipped for tracking, ear-chipped and placed back. So the immediate mass trap effort lowers the number tremendously by taking out the friendlies. So that is a component.
So I, in your, in your answer, I think you combined pieces of the answer. I think some of it was about how things could be done better, and I was really trying to understand the process of, of coming up with an ordinance, you know, and, and you said you're, I'm hearing some discussion back and forth, so this is a, a committee that would meet two, three times and could be done in two months, or?
You could set a timeframe of three months. We can look at best practices of other organizations, cities. You're not the only city with this problem, and others have solved it in very interesting ways, but they have good ordinance language that gives code enforcement the ability to go out and deal with rogue feeders and also preserve property rights and yet allow humane practices to occur.
Okay. Another question from Vice Mayor Leonardis.
Thank you, Mayor Rennie. So since you've been through this with Mountain View, what were the results? How long did it take the committee to form and arrive at the ordinance and bring the community together and resolve all the issues?
It was about three and a half months.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions. Thank you. Next up, I have Marlene Lamb, and then Hazel Burton Bockling?
Marlene.
Bowling, okay. And then Jenna Skinner. I think it's Jenna Skinner. So, Marlene?
My name is Marlene Lamb. The last time I was at a city council meeting was when my 54-year-old son had to come down here for civics. I am here about a raccoon problem. I will state that I have an indoor cat that's 17 years old. She only goes outside to look in the morning when I get the paper. We have a real problem with a neighbor feeding raccoons. She told my other neighbor she has been feeding them for 13 years. We have called vector control, and vector control says that at 105 Royal Grandi Way, they come up through the sewer, and that's fine. We've had raccoons through the years. Jane and I counted eight raccoons going to the feeding area the other day. We went and knocked on the woman's door, and she told us she'd been feeding us. And then she gave us a religious track that we should go find the Lord, so we left. I have now a bill from my handyman that we are going to, we've talked to vector control. They're going under my deck, so he has to pull up part of the deck, and he's going to put screening and wood underneath there. He's given me an estimate of about $400. We also have a problem of, and you've probably never heard of a raccoon latrine. Apparently, raccoons like to go to the bathroom in the same location. We've had two in my neighbor's yard, there's one in a yard further down, and I discovered one on my shed the other day where my handyman came and did, cleaned it off, put chlorine, a whole bunch of things, cleaned that off. I would like, the late, I heard it's against the law to feed wild animals. How can you make that woman comply? And can we ask wildlife to come out and trap some of these? We have just an oversupply. We've always had a few, and they were irritating, and they've been eating my tomatoes, which has irritated me. So I hope in a way that we don't have feral cats in my neighborhood. So I would hope that you could do something about the raccoon, the woman next to there feeding the raccoons for 13 years. Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor Leonardis has a question for you.
Thank you, Mayor Rennie. It's actually a comment for staff. If they could follow up with the speaker, this sounds like an isolated incident, and perhaps approach the neighbor about the alleged feeding.
Well, we've talked to code compliance. We've read that wildlife will come out and trap them, and they can't take them to another colony because that's a bad thing, so they do humane euthanasia, and I'm, I'm more than in favor of that. I mean, eight raccoons living under my deck is too many. One raccoon is too many.
Thank you. I hope our staff will follow up.
I hope so, too.
Thank you. All right. So next up, I have Hazel Burton Bowling.
Hi, I just want to say I just got my nonprofit, and I've been rescuing for 30 years, and I wanted to explain what a feral cat is. A feral cat is probably someone that had a mom cat, let them out, and the kittens never were touched, so they're feral. They're not adoptable, which is why they're released back into the neighborhood. But what people don't know is they keep the mice and the rat population down. I lived in Maui for 18 years. I trapped 50 feral cats at McKenna Beach. They were starving, and they looked like rats. They do not do well without food. Anyways, I got them all trapped, neutered, took all the kittens out, socialized the kittens, got the kittens adopted and healthy and well, and they lived out their lives there, 20 at Wailea Shopping Village. I went there one night, there was a mom and kittens there, and the mom was crying because they were all hungry, so I started feeding them. I went back every night, and the mom was missing, and I said, "Where's the mom?" They said, "Oh, they trapped her and put her down." So that was what they used to do to feral cats, is they were all euthanized. But they found that it did not stop the population. More feral cats would come in. And I've met the person feeding in that area and, that they're talking about in Los Gatos, and I think the problem is she's feeding too late at night because of the neighbors being very upset at her. It's, the proper feeding time is during the day. But I've been in that area. I've actually taken a mom and kittens out with two, a trapper helped me trapped a mom. The mom was very tough to get, and finally, after four days of putting the kittens in the trap, we were able to get the mom. So there's people there besides me, besides me, that have gone there in this area to trap, neuter, and release, so they don't keep multiplying. I think if the woman was able to feed at a proper time, because these cats are used to being fed, so it will be very cruel if they stop getting fed. It's at the time that she's doing it, everything needs to be cleaned up. I've been in Town Terrace area late at night, early in the morning. I've not seen the skunks and lots of them and cockroaches. I'm sure where she lives, there probably is. Maybe I wasn't near the feeding station. But I've driven there several times, you know, for the trapping and the neutering and the releasing of the cats, and that's why they're released in the area. But if you take all those ferals out of that area, believe me, they will be run, you know, by rats and mice in that area. I just think that time needs to be changed, as to where and what time to feed the, the cats.
Okay, thank you. Let's see if you have any questions. Seeing none, thank you very much. Next up, I have Jenna Skinner, and then Kim O'Rourke, and then Christine Hernandez.
Good evening. Thank you for hearing all our concerns. I also have to voice that I so appreciate the changes that are made in that ordinance. I think you've taken a good look at the problem and the management aspect of feral cats. One of the things that I feel very strongly about is that it's not about feeding feral cats, it's about colony management. My passion is TNR. What I like to do is trap and release. We're not going to get ahead of this problem if we stop feeding the cats. The cats are going to stay. They're extremely territorial. They don't leave their territory. When you open up a cat stomach that's dead, a feral cat, you find garbage. It's not always the feeding that the humans do that keep them in their territory. They're just territorial. Feeders, if we tell them they can't feed, they're going to go underground. That's just the way it is. I know about the situation in Town Terrace. I know about it personally because I supported that feeder for quite a while. When that feeder chose not to listen to me about colony management and property, proper colony management and feeding, I had to walk away. And because the neighbors got vicious, I've had to stay away. I've trapped dozens of cats out there and taken many, many kittens out of there. The key to stopping the feral population, to slowing this whole thing down, is colony management, and you cannot manage a colony without feeding them. You have to be able to draw them to you so that you can trap them. I, I do appreciate, so appreciate the changes you made in that ordinance. It's, it's a huge difference. I do think we have to talk about it more. I don't think we're quite there yet. I would love to see a committee, and I'd love to be part of it.
Vice Mayor has a question. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Rennie. Are you aware of any type of food that cats will eat that raccoons and skunks will not eat?
No, absolutely not. Raccoons and skunks will eat anything. One of the things about feeding to avoid skunks is if you feed over, off the ground, that they can't get to it. Raccoons are a whole nother story. I don't know what to do about them. Any other questions?
Thank you. Okay, no further questions. Thank you.
If you feed, can I just say something? If you feed during the proper time, the skunks and the raccoons do not come around.
I think we got that message. Thank you. Next up, Kim O'Rourke.
Hi, I wasn't planning on speaking twice, but I was actually coming for the house, and I saw this, this proposal or bill or whatever you guys call it, out there, and I did a lot of research ahead of time. And first of all, feral cats, once they're feral, they're feral. You can adopt a couple of them out, that's about it, when they're kittens. And everything I looked at about banning cat feeding, putting permits out, Antioch tried it, a couple other counties in, in California tried it, it doesn't work. The only thing that is going to work is attract all the cats in, catch them, clip their ears so everybody knows, and then, you know, spay and neuter them. It's SBCA, Humane Society, I have like a bunch of just research that I, I have done about them trying to put fines on people. The problem is, if you have a cat lady, no offense, she's going to do it. She's going to go behind the doors, she's going to do it, she's going to still feed them, and then you got to sit there and say, "Who's going to regulate this? Who's going to go watch this person? What time do we have?" And that was the problem with all these other cities that tried it. They said, "Okay, great, we, we put the permit out there, we banned it. Now, what energy, what time do we have to now mandate it?" They didn't have it. It wasn't going to work. It didn't work. And I think they need to, I think, I agree with everything that Councilman Leonardis did. I think it's great, but I think everyone needs to really sit back and think about a little bit more about how you're going to really put more management into it. And it is the TNR, it is trapping them, and how, how are they going to get a committee to do that? That's the only way it's going to work, from everything I've read.
Okay, any questions? Seeing none, thank you. Next up, Christine Hernandez.
Hi, I'm Christine Hernandez, and I-
Can you pull the mic a little closer, please? Thank you.
I am a community outreach volunteer for a local rescue organization in San Jose. I am the community outreach coordinator for this rescue organization, and I hold workshops for proper feeding and colony management. There are free workshops to the public. We advertise it or promote it on Facebook and throughout the community for anyone who wants to learn how to feed community cats the right way and how to trap and neuter, return, to help reduce the, the population of the homeless cats all throughout San Jose and the surrounding cities. I just also wanted to mention that I receive anywhere from one to five calls, phone calls or emails each day, sometimes zero in a day, but for the most part, one to five daily from either residents or businesses who have a mom and, a mom cat in her litter that was born in their backyard, and the people don't know what to do with it, and they just, they always want the cats removed. And I go out to the, the home, educate them, and let them know, "You can't just remove them. New cats will come in." Oftentimes, I am able to persuade the, the complaint, the person asking for help, I'm able to persuade them to, once we spay-neuter all the cats and kittens, or the colony, whatever it may be, they oftentimes will end up feeding the colony and to keep it controlled because we can't remove them. They live there, and that's all they know is the, the area where they were born and where they live. So, and I am in support of the committee that you are discussing, and that's it.
Thank you. You have, let's go, Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you. I don't know if you're the right person to answer this question, so if you're not, just tell me. Heard a lot tonight about feral cats. What should we do with feral cats? What's the right thing? How do we manage them? What do you do with the collateral consequence of an established colony, that being raccoons, skunks, roaches, et cetera? So I've heard a lot of people tell me how to manage the cats. I haven't heard anyone tell me how to manage the skunks and raccoons and cockroaches. Do you have anything that you can tell me on that?
I can only speak for myself. I have, I feed 13 colonies, cat colonies, one of which has, there are 40 cats in the colony. I, I've spayed and neutered all of them and have not had any kittens at all for six years within that colony. And I just want to add, all of these cats in this, they live in a parking lot of an apartment complex, and all of these cats have been left by previous tenants. They were not born there, and they weren't populating from each other there. They were all left by residents there. To answer your question, I feed that colony, I feed all my colonies between the hours, or before dawn, I'm sorry, after dawn or before dusk, and at, during that time, I never see skunks or raccoons. It's in the midnight hours that the skunks and raccoons are running around.
Okay, so you're an educated person who does this in the proper way. You have a rogue feeder who feeds it all the time, and now you have skunks and raccoons and cockroaches. Now, what do, what does the town do?
Well, if, if a experienced feeder can't get through to the person who's not feeding properly, I actually don't know what the answer would be.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry about that.
Vice Mayor Leon Artis.
Thank you, Mayor Rennie. Describe the process of trapping the feral cats and then taking them to a location and then having them spayed and neutered. And then, I mean, is this a period of days, weeks? You have, and then you have to bring them back and then you just open up the back of the car and they just run? I mean, how do you reintroduce the colony? And how do they know? And could you take them and drive them down the road 50 miles and let them out somewhere? And what happens?
So, you start by observing the, wherever the problem is, whatever the neighborhood is, the block, the business, whatever it is. You go out and observe, observe and you watch and you count, see how many cats are there, first of all. You put food down, you see how many cats come and where are they coming from. You'll, you'll see old cats, kittens, cats that are injured. You see all, every kind. I use a drop trap which can catch anywhere from one to seven or eight cats in a cage. Excuse me. That, that's the maximum that I will bring to the shelter in one day. They ask that we don't, that trappers don't bring more than five. They do allow me to bring more than five. If I have them, they'll take them. They, the cats are held for three days or 72 hours at the shelter. They are scanned for microchips if they don't belong to anybody, which most of them don't. They are then put in through the TNR program, which is vaccine surgery, ear clipped, microchip, their microchip to the San Jose shelter. However, on their individual, their individual intake card, it has the address and location where they came from. So if animal control were to go out and pick up a cat somewhere, they would scan it for a microchip, see that, oh, it doesn't belong on this street. Somehow it got over here, but it doesn't belong here. They would bring it back to the address that it does belong to, rejoin it to its colony. And now I forgot what the question was. Where am I going with this? What else was, what else did you need to know?
Well, I think you pretty much answered. I mean, the reintroduction, so you would essentially, after the process of installing the chip, clipping the ears, getting them spayed and neutered, you would bring them back in the cage five at a time and then say?
Yeah, so, yeah. So the big cage, transfer them into individual cages, pick them up after 72 hours from the shelter. And depending on their surgery, some mom cats, they will abort the kittens if the mom was pregnant. They have large incisions. I will hold the female, the mom, the moms who had the kittens aborted. I will hold them over for an extra day for recovery because their incisions are bigger. But I will, after that, will bring them back to the location. I open the trap facing away from traffic toward hills or the yard, let them go. Another thing I do do is I will knock on doors throughout the neighborhood to find out if there is somebody feeding there in that neighborhood. And I usually end up finding someone who is. Oftentimes, I find there is nobody in the neighborhood who feeds. And then that's when I become the feeder of those, that cat colony. But when I do find the feeder in a neighborhood, then I do let them know how to properly do it. We, I also find out who in the neighborhood is not happy with the cats here. So I can go talk to those people. I go and introduce myself to them, let them know that I'm there to trap and spay, neuter the cats in the neighborhood to help reduce the problem. And that I do let them know, I have talked to so and so who's feeding the cats here. Let them know and shown them how to do it properly so that it's hidden, it's done at the proper time of day, so not to attract other animals. And that's the best I can do.
One quick follow-up. So, based on all that you said, you know, we have Town Terrace, we have a neighborhood, we have a wildlife problem. Would you be willing to contribute your time and expertise to help us solve that wildlife problem?
I sure will.
Thank you.
I have a question for you. So I'm guessing at the, the answer to what I think Mr. Leon Artis keeps trying to get to, and that's, why do you want to release them back? And I, I believe the answer is, if you remove the cats, other cats will come back because there's a source of food, it's a good place to live. There's some, something going there. If you fill up the whole colony, so no more cats fed, if you fill them all up with neutered cats, there's no way they can reproduce. If you just take them away, cats will come in that can reproduce and your problem goes crazy. Am I correct?
That's correct.
So that's why it's so important to capture them and then put them back so that others don't fill the spot that can reproduce.
Right, thank you. And that is why my colony of 40 cats has remained 40 cats. Because I've had many die over the years. They don't, feral cats don't live long. Some can, but most don't. When they die off, lo and behold, within a few days, a new cat, unneutered or unfixed female finds its way in. There, because there are cats everywhere looking for food. It's just the homeless cat and hungry cat problem is, in my opinion, completely out of control everywhere. So, yeah, they do, they move in immediately.
Okay. Councilmember Jensen.
Sorry, I just need to belabor this for a bit. Is, if you feed the cat in the manner that you are describing, that is correct?
Yeah.
Do you end up establishing a colony versus controlling a colony? What I mean is, now they know, I can go there and get food versus, I think Councilman Leon Artis was talking about, what if you moved them to a different location? What would happen?
Yes, that does happen. That has happened.
So you can actually establish it versus eliminate it?
It, yeah.
Or control it, I should say.
I, yes, I believe what you're saying is correct. It can happen where you can establish it.
And the behavior that you're describing with the cats, and I've tempted to do, do this, but I know I shouldn't, but is that unique to cats? So for example, I lived in a neighborhood where there are a bunch of peacocks.
Okay.
And they were wild peacocks. And they were all over the place. And there was a person that was feeding the peacocks. That's great. And peacocks are quite exotic if you don't live by peacocks. But then someone decided along the way, a long time ago now, that they didn't actually care for the peacocks. And they got a van and they scooped up peacocks and they took them up in the hills. And now, if you come to my neighborhood, there are no peacocks. So, I'm trying to determine, well, is that representative of animal behavior? So you take them and you put them in a different location, voila, no peacocks? Or do cats come back to the same place?
So it, there's a law that says you can't remove them.
Let's just assume you do, just like the rogue feeder.
All right. I know that some cats would find their way back to the neighborhood. Not all of them. It's been, it's been known that the cats will die if they go to a new location where they're not used to it and they don't know where the food source is. Or if there is an existing colony where they are dropped off 50 miles away, oftentimes, they can't get into that colony to join them and have food. So they will, they're kept, kept out and can't find a source of food and will die.
Vice Mayor.
So you just touched on a point that I was thinking about. Let's just say you have 20 cats in the Town Terrace apartment group. And then you have them all chipped and spayed and neutered. And you brought them all back and you just let them out. Do those 20 cats prevent another 20 cats from saying, hey, they're taking real good care of us here. They're going to do all our medical and dental and
[laughing]
put us back out there and feed us some more? Or do those 20 cats say, hey, this is our group and we're going to chase out the new cats and there will be no new membership?
It, I've seen both. It happened both ways.
Okay.
Yeah, I've seen both.
Okay. I think we'll go on and let somebody else have a chance to speak. Next, next up, I have Katie Laskola.
Hello, I'm Katie Laskola. And I live on Town Terrace, right next door to the cat lady. And it's been really, really difficult living there. I literally opened my front door to take my two dogs, who are both seniors, to potty on the front lawn. And literally, it's a highway of skunks, raccoons, possums, rats, mice, crows in the daytime and the morning, out of control. There are no cats. This is not a cat issue on Town Terrace. I have seen maybe a handful of cats and three of them have collars on. They are neighborhood cats feasting before the skunks get there. And then, once dusk comes, and by the way, I have seen the skunks and the raccoons during the day. I think I've sent you pictures of them. They are out at all hours because she is feeding. And I think I sent you her feeding schedule because I see it every single day. So this is no longer a cat issue. This is a wild animal issue. And what's shocking to hear from the crowd, and I sympathize, I am an animal lover. I would never want anything to happen to an animal. However, some of you have tried to help her. Some of you know about the issue and haven't done anything. And this has been five-plus years of this going on. And that's, I think, what's shocking the most to sit in the audience and hear, because I literally am next door. And the saddest part is, it's, this is the saddest part is for the wild animals themselves. They are being lured into this area to be run over by cars. I've seen them. I think I sent those pictures too. You know, diseases, it's filthy. I don't know if you've been by, but the crows, literally, there is feces everywhere. And it's terrible. The saddest part also is that this woman tells you that she works for the county. She works with the Humane Society. She works with everybody and their brother because it's okay for her to do it. And it's not okay. So my fear is that she's going to find some sort of loophole in what we're trying to do here with the TNR. And all of a sudden, we're back to the same issue. You know, the committees, I get it, but nobody's helped thus far. Maybe the problem will go away for a week or two and she'll abide by it. And then when the committees go away, what happens? It goes back to the same thing that we've been dealing with all of these years. The property managers, the owner of the property who was here and speaking to you guys in June, nobody has the residents, nobody has any power to tell this woman to stop. The police, everybody. So we need some sort of criminal situation here to get rid of this issue of the wild animals on Town Terrace.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Leon Artis.
Thank you, Mayor Rennie. Ms. Laskola, so what you're saying is, there really isn't a feral cat colony problem, that the cat lady should be called the skunk lady or the raccoon lady?
Exactly.
She's intentionally feeding raccoons and skunks after hours.
I've seen no kittens. I've seen a handful of cats, the same cats, and some of them have collars on. There is no cat issue on Town Terrace. They have been scared away by the wild animals now. And what's coming next are the coyotes and the lions and everybody else. Everybody knows, all the, all the animals in the neighborhood know about Town Terrace.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Next up, I have, I think it's Bernice Embry.
Hi, I'm Bernice Embry. And I have been a cat caretaker since the 70s. And I feel like I've seen quite a lot, but not many wild animals. I live in La Cada's. And I have seen wild animals recently. I've had a lot of work with a pallet company where there's many cats, many cats that I've maintained over 10 years. And at first, it was fine with the owners that I came in and fed every day. And then it wasn't okay. They didn't like it going on with cats there and so forth. But I, I decided to come in and keep doing it. And then I talked with one of the partners, the brothers, and I told him, yes, I'll stay away from the trucks and the workers if I can come in now because I can't no longer come in the back way since they move tons and tons of, tons of dirt. So, my feeling is that I talked with the owners. I even went so far to sign a release of liability if I was hurt on the property. So that was taken care of. And, but my, my real, real suggestion here for everyone working with, with animals, is that they are here. Cats have been here since the planet. And they weren't indoor pets. They were animals. And they have a right to be here. And people get it if you show them pictures. I brought some pictures. I showed the pictures. This is another part of the saga of going in there. And this involved a husky. But I got pictures from the guy across the street to show how much he likes feeding cats over there. This is industrial area. So people understand that there's other life. And it's been here and it should be here. And TNR, I'm all for it. That woman that we're talking about, she obviously needs some direction and definitely the right kind of food.
Thank you. Next up, I have Janice Frazier.
Thank you, councilmembers. And I'd like to first say, I'm Janice Frazier. I'm the president of PAWS for SJACS, which is the welfare group for the San Jose shelter. We do over 10,000 cats a year that come through that facility. John has done some input and I applaud all the work that Lynn has done trying to get everything that everybody inputted in advance in as much as possible. I still think there is some more work to be done on this. And I would like to point out that as PAWS, as a welfare group, we sat down with John and worked out the guidelines for proper colony management. That document was run between us and him with their logo put on it, their stamp of approval. In addition, we've worked on mitigations as Diana mentioned. Also, we had put out a list of deterrents to help. Now, not all the deterrents or things are going to address wildlife. Back to the question you had about how do you stop the wildlife from feeding on what they put out. But again, proper feeding practices don't allow the wildlife to come. And you break that pattern. So it's a lot of this whole pattern thing for animals in general. The reason they came was they found the scraps. They kept coming, they kept finding more scraps. And apparently, according to the neighbor, it's even worse because now she's not even feeding the cat, she's just feeding everything. It is a person who needs to be addressed. And I understand there are other locations that have to be addressed. But again, a committee could help work with those people and try to get them to understand. And then you have a state law that prohibits basically the feeding of wildlife. So you have the ability to go after people who are deliberately feeding the skunks and other wildlife. I did want to address a couple of other things just real quick, since I have some time here. Back to the question of how far will a cat come back if you drop it off? It's known that cats wander two miles frequently, okay, for, if they need to move, right? I've actually had a cat that left San Ramon and made it back to Santa Clara. So somebody adopted one and got out. But that's a different issue. But they can home back. I mean, it's, it's pretty amazing. Moving colonies isn't really a very viable issue. Moving anything, imprinting anything to a new location takes time and effort. It isn't like you can just let them go where a place they don't know. So that's unfortunate. There is no, we like to call it, no feral Disneyland to turn them into, basically, or take cats to that you don't want to have. I do actually work on placing working cats. And the Humane Society also has a working cat program for cats that we have to rehome that are outside cats. And to do that requires two to four weeks in cages and a lot of work. Basically, I want to let you know that everybody in San Jose is working with feral freedom, which is done at the shelter, which is fixing the cats and going through the TNR program. And that is what's currently done and is currently considered the best practice by most of the big cities in the nation are moving on to feral freedom type work. And the colonies reduce in numbers with time. Christine kind of made it sound like it will never go down, but of course it will. It, cats don't always replace the cats that die off. It's a whole hierarchy, right? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, Jim Patton.
Thanks for giving me a chance to speak this afternoon. I've lived here in La Cada's for close to 15 years now. I've been managing two apartment buildings in the Town Terrace neighborhood now for over 10 years. The person that everybody's referring to but isn't naming is Ann Mitchell. And Ann Mitchell and I have had a contentious relationship at best for the last 10 years. I spent a lot of time trying to reason with her. I spent a lot of time researching feral cat problems, trying to come up with a solution to try to work with her to stop contributing to the problems that she was creating. It eventually finally came down to working with the owners and we just decided to rip out all of landscaping in order to stop providing homes for the feral cat population. out all of landscaping in order to stop providing homes for the feral cat population that she was creating and promoting its growth. At one point, we had well over twenty feral cats living on the property I manage, alone. She was doing nothing to manage the kittens, she was, if she was participating with any TNR programs and stuff like that, it wasn't being, it certainly wasn't manifesting itself into a reduction in the number of cat problems we've had. What that set off was that then other property owners in the neighborhood started ripping out all of their juniper bushes and stuff like that, so that we were cleaning up the area, effectively not offering shelter for the feral cats, and that was a bit of a solution. Though, there are still feral cats running around in the neighborhood, I can't give you an accurate count and stuff like that, but I know there's at least one breeding female in our neighborhood, and I just noticed recently that she's got more kittens in tow, which would be the third litter this year alone. On top of that, my experience with San Jose Animal Control is I effectively have no faith in them. I don't know what, what we're paying them for, I don't know what they're supposed to be doing, but from my experience with them, is they offer no real solutions. On a positive impact, even though I've never met Jenna Skinner personally, we have had positive interaction. The last round of kittens that I noticed and stuff, I reached out to Jenna, but she had essentially had told me that because of the volatile situation that we have in our neighborhood, she didn't feel confident to come in and actually address the kitten situation. I spent the better part of one afternoon going through a long list of cat shelters, cat rescue organizations, and I couldn't find one organization that was willing to come out and actually capture these kittens, track them, and then hopefully put them into foster programs, as well as to deal with the problem with the, the one breeding female. The best I got was from one organization, they were willing to loan me a trap. Well, I have tried trapping cats in the past, and the only thing I managed to do was to catch two skunks. And I can go on endlessly and tell you how exciting it is to try to open up a trap enough so that a skunk can get out without getting sprayed, scratched, or bitten. Now, one of the questions I have, and I don't expect it to be answered at this meeting, is that when we're talking about feral cat populations, or we're talking about TNR programs and stuff like that, is what's the life expectancy of the cat population? Are we expecting it's gonna just be going on in perpetuity? Is this cat colony gonna list, you know, go on for twenty, thirty, forty years? I don't know what the answer to that is.
Thank you. Look, you're gonna have to have you wrap up, but you do have a question from Vice Mayor Leonidas.
Thank you, Mayor Rennie. I have a bunch of questions. Being that you are a property manager, did you ever consider sending everybody out a lease addendum that says if you feed the wild animals, you're in breach of your lease, and therefore you will be evicted?
I didn't have problems with our tenants. Well, there was one tenant that was creating a problem, but eventually, once she got sprayed by a skunk the first time, she stopped leaving food out on her porch. But from that, it wasn't, any of my tenants were adding to the problem.
So, what you're saying is, the buildings that you are managing currently, none of your tenants are feeding?
No.
Okay. We had, obviously, a big discussion about cats and feral cats and colonies and all these things, and Ms. LaScolla mentioned that this person is feeding raccoons and skunks. You seemed, Ms. LaScolla's interpretation was, it wasn't necessarily a cat problem. You mentioned that there is a cat problem.
Well, there's sure feral cats running around.
Is there two problems, essentially?
But I've seen Ann Mitchell leaving food out, and that's what brings the skunks in, the cockroaches, the raccoons. You know, it's encouraging coyotes to come in, because, you know, they become the apex predator at that point. But I've also seen Ann Miller sitting out on the sidewalks feeding the cats. She has a personal relationship with some of these cats, and so she'll sit out, and the cat'll come over to her, and she'll feed, feed them at that time. Whether she leaves the food out, I don't know. The one other point I wanted to bring up that hasn't been mentioned in any of this is that the environmental impact that, that feral cat populations have on native populations, as well as the environmental health. And just to mention a couple of things, I'm not gonna go into a lot of detail, but California Department of Fish and Wildlife has acknowledged the problem, and has a great deal of resource information on their website that documents the problems that feral cat populations create. There's also the Urban Wildlife Research Project, right now is, is currently completing an ongoing study here in Santa Clara County on the impact that feral cats and their feeders have on the local environment as well, too. There's a great deal of information out there on how feral cats, from the long term, have a negative impact on our environment. And California's supposed to be an environmental state, and one of the things we have to consider from a long-term standpoint is, how do we reduce the overall population, not just from a management standpoint, but so that it reduces the impact on our environment?
Okay, go ahead.
One last question. So, you mentioned you try to trap the cats yourself, and were unsuccessful. And you've heard a number of speakers here this evening, seems like they, they have more experience than you. Would you be able, willing to reach out to some of these individuals?
Yeah, I would love to have some phone numbers that are people I can reach out to. I'd love to have Jenna have the opportunity to come back into our neighborhood, so that we have a reach out, so that every time somebody spots a mother and feral kittens, is that we can get somebody out within twenty-four hours to, to trap those kittens, because we stand a better chance of seeing those cats into foster homes and being picked up than if they're let, you know, dropped back off, and they just grow wild.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. I have Brad West next.
It's been a long night. I'll try to make it quick, but I, I think, I've heard a lot, and I agree with almost everything that's been said tonight. I think I'm really here as a, almost character witness for Ann, who's been named by name tonight, because I know Ann, and I know she's lived here over seventy years, and I've lived here my entire life, over fifty years. And she's a good person, with a good heart. She's not a rogue feeder. She has training, she has experience, she has a kind heart, and what's happened is she has been attacked by the community, particularly her neighbors. Every single panel in her car has been kicked in, she, her car has been scratched, they've tore off pieces of her car, hasn't been repaired, 'cause she does not have the money. So, Ann is living there becau-, basically, not out of her choice, but because of a terrible family situation with illness in her family, that, that really affected her income. So, she's put there by the county, and does not wanna live there, and she's been a feeder her whole life. And she has training, she's a vet tech, she even went to school with, who's the famous Jane Goodall, yeah, back in college. I mean, she's a, she's, she's not gonna stop feeding cats. She's gonna do it, like a lot of people have described, in her way. And I think what's happened is multifactorial, a lot of the good points have been brought up tonight, is she is now feeding in the middle of the night, and at times where it is gonna attract skunks. And if you ask her, she'll say, I do not feed the skunks or any other animals, I don't even attract those. Those are coming up from the creek. The cat problem started with transient population, growing up in Los Cadas. I know the town terrace has a lot of drug problems, transient residents who leave cats. And so, she has had success at getting those, some of those cats adopted and spayed, et cetera. But what's happened now is, I feel like it's devolved into a situation where, due to her, her finances, and she pays for the food out of her own pocket, and she can't really afford that. I think her rent went up by five dollars, and she couldn't afford that. So, this is a tough situation, you know, life is messy, and it's not as clear-cut as maybe some of us have decided in our minds. I don't think what she's doing is perfect at all. I think there's issues there, and maybe someone can work with her. But I know, again, her heart is in the right place, and she's been abused by a city and neighbors and areas she grew up with, and I think our heart needs to go out to her. And I think naming her name is probably inappropriate, but something needs to be done, and I think the, I'll leave it on, I know that she has spoken with probably pretty much all of you, and every police officer in this town, and has, and has had a good relationship with, with them, trying to abide by the laws by feeding across the streets, et cetera. But if we get the neighbors to get off of her back, I think that she could feed at the proper times, and there could be hope in this situation.
Thank you. Okay, next up, oh, sorry, no, your allocation of speaking items is up. All right, Lee Quintana.
Lee Quintana, and I'm sorry, I'm speaking on another item, I really don't even want But I sat through all of this, and I keep asking myself, when we had a skunk and a raccoon problem, and we had them trapped, we were told that they needed to be euthanized on the spot, they could not be released, and I can understand trapping feral cats with their kittens, and rescuing the kittens, and finding homes for them, but a feral cat is a wild animal, and I can tell you, they are fierce-looking, because when we had our raccoon skunk problem, we also trapped a feral cat, and it was scary. But basically, I, I'll probably get attacked for this, but seems to me, the solution of the feral cat problem is trapping the cats with their kittens and euthanizing the feral cat. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. I have no more cards. Would anybody else wish to speak on this item? Seeing nobody coming forward, I'm gonna close the verbal communication portion, and I...
One more here.
Do I have one more? Okay. Could you fill out a card afterwards, please, and let, let us know your name?
My name is Ren Flexer, and I live in Palo Alto. I've been associated with Palo Alto Humane Society and other rescue groups. I just want to point something about the life expectancy of a little cat colony. It is true that in some areas, where there are lots of animals coming from outside the colonies, if a cat dies, another one may come and replace it, but we have seen other situations where it was not the case. And this lady with a green dress, who is my friend, Leonor Delgado, has been taking care of a couple of colonies in Palo Alto, not very far from the freeway, for about ten, fifteen years. Okay. Originally, that colony had between twenty-five and thirty cats. Last week, the last cat died. So, it is not true that a colony will always keep the same number, there have been many, many cases where the colony has dwindled and disappeared. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Okay, go ahead. Please fill out a card if you didn't fill out one, and give us your name first, please.
Okay, I'm Leonor Delgado. I'm with Palo Alto Humane Society as their humane education manager, and I'd like to address an issue that Ms. Quintana mentioned about feral cats and being wild animals. Feral cats are the offspring of domestic cats, who have not been spayed and neutered, who have been abandoned in communities for various reasons, many of which have to do with the gentrification of certain areas, and residents are forced to move, they're forced to leave their homes, they cannot take their animals with them, they're afraid to give the animals into a shelter, and they abandon the animals, who end up staying in the street, reproducing. Part of the solution would be to create environments where people could take their animals and have laws that would provide homes for people with their animals, if their animals meet certain requirements of being spayed and neutered. The other issue that Ms. Quintana mentioned is that feral cats are really wild. Well, they're frightened, and we have found when we've trapped a feral cat, if you simply put a towel over the trap, the cat calms down, because he feels that he's in a safe environment. Part of, I know I haven't prepared anything, but part of the solution is education, and is, as Denise had mentioned, a multi-pronged approach with community representatives and people in the animal community who have dealt with these kinds of problems before, can bring forth good suggestions and solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I now am out of, completely out of cards. So, I will close the verbal communication on this item, and I know you're all waiting expectantly to see what the council members are gonna do, but I know we, we can't deliberate with our legs crossed, so we're gonna take a seven-minute break, so you'll have to wait a little bit longer. So, we'll take about a seven-minute break. So we'll take about a seven-minute break. Let's come back to order. I know the council's used to being here till midnight, but I know everybody else probably doesn't want to be, so. Okay, so back to council members for questions. Councilmember Spector.
Thank you. It's a question for our deputy town attorney. Under your proposed ordinance, if we had hypothetically a situation in town and you had the ordinance enacted, and somebody was feeding animals not on their property, and you got a complaint, what would happen under the proposed ordinance?
Well, first of all, we would be able to look and see if there are any permitted feeding in that area. If there was permitted feeding in that area, we could go to that person and say, what's going on with this management? There's a problem. Is it you? Have you dropped the ball? Is somebody else dropping the ball? What's happening? And work with them. And I'm sure that many of these people are very fine in this work and would be able to help correct it. If there was nobody permitted there, then we'd know we had an unpermitted person. And we would do our usual enforcement action, which is to say that we would have to try to catch who it is. And we have residents who provide us with photographs, video. We have co-enforcement police go out in the area and look for violations. And if we find the perpetrator of it, we can do a few different enforcement remedies, from citations, you know, working with them at first, citations, to criminal prosecution. Now, one aspect of this ordinance is that I did write it to vest in a property owner liability for nuisance conduct of his or her tenants. And this also gives some empowerment to property managers and owners who have found themselves powerless to say, if you're going to be this recidivist lawbreaker, we can evict you because you're drawing liability on us. So there's a combination of, you know, from compliance to administrative to their own civil nuisance actions and eviction actions to criminal, that can be done.
Thank you.
Councilmember Jensen.
Question for either one of the attorneys. The proposal, section 4.10.085, I don't see any page numbers, so I can't help you other than that. It's basically, it's the feeding of animals on public and private property, and it makes illegal feeding wild animals, kind of the issue that we discussed. We don't have any, currently, we don't have a prohibition on that, and that's one of the issues, correct? We can't use the state law?
It is one of the issues. That's correct. We don't have a municipal code codification of that state law. And the problem is that I'm not empowered to prosecute state laws. That's the DA.
So if the council were to simply enact the, or vote to enact for initial reading this ordinance, we would have that prohibition in place. And then if the town wanted to convene, or any groups wanted to talk about education, outreach, TNR, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, they could do that while having the ordinance in place. And if appropriate, the ordinance could always be amended. Is that right?
That's true.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Leonardo.
Thank you, Mayor Rennie. There is this matter of feeding wildlife, feeding raccoons, feeding skunks. And we're not able to enforce it technically at the town level. However, they are able to enforce it at the state level. Have we ever made any steps or any outreach to, what would it be, a game warden or somebody at the state level to come and enforce it in the interim? I mean, obviously, I know there's an ordinance here this evening that, if adopted, would, I guess, help us. But how do we, or have we ever tried to pursue it at a higher level against any perpetrators in town?
I've spoken with Fish and Game, and they were provided guidance, but they don't do enforcement for us. I had San Jose Animal Care and Services go out there three years ago and try to address it. And all they did was send me one of our citations with the state game code written on it. So it didn't do anything for me because I can't enforce that.
So follow-up. So by adopting a town ordinance, this would enable us to essentially make an arrest, potentially handcuff and jail an individual who violates at the town level from this point forward, as opposed to trying to get the help of the state and then, or San Jose, or anybody else, and nothing ever happening? Is that correct? We can prosecute?
We can, I can prosecute. The town attorney's office can prosecute.
Thank you.
Councilmember Spector.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, to Ms. Lamparos. First of all, I thought your presentation, when we started this a long time ago, was really good. So thank you for that. It's been my impression, based upon my experience here at the council and also personally, that a significant issue in our town with animals is the issue with vicious dogs, dogs that bite, dogs that bark. And we have been ineffective, we, the town, have been ineffective at dealing with those issues. And that may have been, or is it, one of the issues that you were attempting to address in this ordinance, even though we didn't talk about it tonight?
That was the primary issue I was trying to address in this ordinance. It just engendered the least controversy.
Thank you.
Okay, let me ask a question. It seems to me that one, maybe the biggest place that could be a problem with the ordinance on the feral cats, the way it's written, is the 100% approval on, I don't know if we call it public property, condo property, whatever, from, you know, this is one of the nice things, you know, being on town council, you learn so much about new things. And it's, it's, it sounds to me like you can't just remove this lady. You've got a feral cat population that needs to be dealt with correctly. And that's, it's sounding to me like if you just handcuffed her and took her away, you still wouldn't solve the problem. And that you needed to solve the problem with a correct feeding. Maybe it's, you know, probably it's the TNR, it's something like that. The concern that I see with the 100% approval is there's going to be somebody that isn't going to give approval. And so you can't actually properly address the problem because you need everybody's approval to do it, and there are going to, you know, be people that don't agree that that's the right way to do it, kind of thing. You know, what feed them more? Feed them when? No way am I going to agree to that. Do you have alternative wording to this 100% approval?
That is a sticky wicket because you have, in multifamily housing, everybody has the right to live in their property free of nuisance consequences. I thought that the ability for somebody to go to the town manager and get a permit might circumvent the 100% consent requirement. It would probably require a high threshold. Like, if somebody's objecting, I could imagine it might not be granted. But if some people are just silent, and we have very responsible feeders who propose how to do this well on multifamily property, it might be allowed. Now, the private property owners can always forbid it themselves and put up no trespassing signs, or make that a rule of their property. But assuming that that is not happening, then what I anticipate was that it could be obtained by permit under certain circumstances and not only by consent. I was at least trying to draft that compromise.
Maybe if I could also ask similar question from a different angle. Since you're code-compliant, and you have to deal with this problem, and we give you these new tools, what would you do? Just remove this lady? Or do you think more needs to be done to really solve the problem here? After all you've listened to tonight, and you probably already knew half of it anyway, but...
Well, you know, we are not a really heavy-handed town. No one's going to kick down doors and, and I'll tell you that the court system is not going to, they don't send people to jail for, you know, possession of heroin anymore. They're not going to send anybody to jail for this. But they, I would start with the ability to inform of the law. Right now, the folks that are doing this really know that we have no teeth, we have no tools. So you start with saying, now we have teeth and tools, please stop, please do it right. Then you go to administrative citations, and then you go eventually to criminal citations, misdemeanor citations, which can be paid with a fine, frankly. And then if you have continuous repeat conduct, you can bring a criminal action to enjoin. It is a difficult problem to solve. I agree. And all the people who say, you're not going to fix it, you're not going to stop it, I know, I worry about that also. But I can do nothing if I have no tools. I can try to do something if I have some tools. And if I've also invested in the property owner, the ability to say, hey, I'm going to be liable for this if you don't stop, then that is another tool in the belt. It's more of a civil tool of, you need to stop this too, or you're going to lose your place to live.
And I guess if I belabor this a little bit, what I'm hearing is it's not really about stopping. There's already some colonies there. If you stop her, you've still got the colonies, so you're either effectively killing them, or somebody else is going to feed them, or they're going to find their food in the trash or something like that. So, I mean, what I've learned tonight is just getting this lady to stop feeding is not the right answer. The right answer is to feed correctly and to manage the population.
Well, again, we're talking about two different things. So in terms of the feral cat community management, and there is overlap, feeding correctly for the purpose of trap, neuter, and return will diminish the population over time. And it will appropriately manage the nuisance consequences of improper feeding. So by, with proper feral cat feeding for the right reason, you hopefully address the skunks and the vermin, because you're not putting out food scattered, you know, through from the car window or all over the streets and under carports and cars at all times of the night. So, you know, hopefully, it has a dual effect. Now, in my mind, the question remains, you know, do you allow the mere sustenance of the community, or just for the purpose of trapping the animals for vaccination and ear-tipping and vetting care and neutering and return? And then stop feeding them? I mean, it takes, it could take six months to a year to accomplish that within the colony. So there's a lot of feeding and management of that feral cat community that's going to go on, hopefully, well, until all those animals are, you know, healthy and neutered and all that kind of thing. It is our best effort at trying to bridge the divide and manage the problem that's out there. But the problem, I know there are cats out there, but what I'm hearing is that the problem is the wildlife. And the wildlife has got, that problem has to get managed. I have a duty.
Okay. Councilmember Jensen.
This is sort of a follow-up to the mayor's question. If I'm looking at the proposed ordinance, there's the prohibition, there's, again, it's 4.10.085. And it goes through what's unlawful. And paragraph D has the prohibition. You can't feed an animal unless you get 100% buy-in from the tenant through the property owner. Then it goes on to E, which says that prohibitions in subsection A, C, and D do not apply to trap, neuter, and release. So the 100% problem as posed by the mayor, if I'm reading this correctly, is not a problem because if you're a legit organization feeding properly an established colony, you can do this under E. But if you're just somebody who wants to feed cats in your apartment, you have to get everybody else to say, okay. Am I reading this correctly?
Yes, you are.
Yes, you are, and, and E, or I'm sorry, for, that exemption for the, the animal rescue or the TNR feeder has to comply with 4A through F, which are the permit requirements.
Right.
But yes, you're right. It, that gets around...
But if I'm a legitimate licensed or I've complied with the permitting, or I'm one of these rescue organizations, I don't necessarily have to have the 100% buy-in because I'm exempt if I've done everything correctly under the permit processing.
That's right.
Okay. Just want to make sure that I'm reading that right.
Yep. That was my attempt at the workaround for that problem.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Rennie. Ms. Lamparos, we heard some extensive testimony from the public this evening. Is there anything that struck a chord with you without going and cross-referencing line per line, everything that was said in what's in your ordinance?
Yes, actually, thank you, Councilwoman. There are a couple of things I wanted to say, and one is that our research showed us that Mountain View's task force met for two years to no resolution. There was no ordinance passed, no regulation about feral cat feeding in Mountain View currently. So it was a bit of a, that's a bit of a, a tough pill to swallow if that's going to be the situation. And the second thing was, Mr. Ciccarelli, who is the director of San Jose Animal Care and Services, provided me with many, many comments. I made most of them, most of his edits. With regard to the feral cat area, he basically said, don't do it. Don't pass anything about feral cats. I'm not against any law about feral cats. So he really didn't give me much guidance on the feral cat front, except to say, if you, basically, if you're insisting on doing it, I would recommend writing a law that defines what is allowable feeding activity and what is not versus banning it altogether, and that is what I tried to do.
Thank you.
If I could follow up on that a little bit. So, again, I'm, I'm not, I read it, but I probably don't remember well. What do we have in there that goes to making sure its feeding is done correctly?
Yes. That would be 4.10.085, number four, the exemptions for the legitimate rescue or TNR work, and the criteria of A through F, one of which says, "The use of food must comply with best practices and guidelines for feeding as established by the agency charged with animal control or the town of Los Gatos and reputable rescue or TNR agencies." These guidelines should include, but not necessarily be limited to, putting out only an amount of food that can be consumed by the target animals in 30 minutes, putting out food at the same time and same place, each incidence of feeding to establish a pattern, not overfeeding, and picking up and removing any remaining food after 30 minutes of first placing it down to prevent wildlife, litter, sanitation issues, and other nuisance consequences. And this I gleaned from research into various feral cat organizations, although I was accused of not looking at that at all, I did, but, but it was supposed to be, you know, include but not limited to. So if feral cat folks come in with other ideas, better ideas, similar ideas, there is some play for the town manager to assess on a case-by-case basis.
Okay. Councilmember Specter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to circle back to staff and reiterate that I thought that your presentation of your proposed ordinance was very well done. I appreciate the fact that you continued this, or you asked the council to continue this item so that you could interface with other professionals and amend your proposed ordinance to reflect that input. I also understand that realistically, even though we heard about the feral cats today, and, and we certainly have for this evening, realistically, the town needed, needed an ordinance to deal with vicious dogs, and so this ordinance would do that. I appreciate the fact that this ordinance could possibly be better, could be amended, and that could always happen, but I wouldn't want to delay at this point the work that has been done and the issues which are addressed in this ordinance. So with that in mind, I am going to move for the introduction and first reading of an ordinance by title only, amending chapter four of the Los Gatos Town Code entitled Animals and Fowl.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a motion and a second? Do I have comments?
Vice Mayor.
Thank you to everybody who came and spoke this evening. I learned a lot. Thank you for your efforts.
Okay. I, I learned a lot also. It was very interesting, and I, I will be supporting the motion because I think we do need to move ahead with something, and it is possible that it could, I, it sounds like it could be improved, and this doesn't have to be the last time we amend, amend the ordinance, so if you are very passionate that we haven't done it right, I encourage you to keep working with our assistant town attorney, and, and we can look at additional, possible additional changes in the future if, if that works out. Okay? Other comments? I'll call a question. All in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? Hearing none, passes unanimously. Okay, we need the reading by title only, please.
An ordinance of the town council of the town of Los Gatos amending chapter four of the Los Gatos Town Code entitled Animals and Fowl.
Okay. Thank you. So we're on to our next item, which is going to be item nine, which is adopting a resolution approving amendments to the North Forty specific plan.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, before you this evening, excuse me, is potential amendments that were discussed on August 15th. Staff was asked to prepare amendments to allow options for either plan development applications or development agreements through the specific plan. Staff has drafted those. They are contained in the resolution that's in attachment 48, and that concludes staff's report, other than there is a desk item, and we're here to answer any questions.
Okay. Questions from council? I guess I should say, this is, this is a continuation, so verbal communication is closed, so I won't, I will not be opening, reopening verbal communication, so council members can ask questions or go straight into motions. Councilmember Jensen.
I'd make a motion that we adopt resolution, which is the resolution, which is in attachment 48, which contains the changes to the specific plan that we voted on in our special meeting of August 15th.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Would anybody wish to comment? Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Saak.
I just wanted to say that while I appreciate the changes and agree with the specific change that's in the new amendment, I'll be voting against it for the reasons identified in the last meeting.
Councilmember Specter.
Ditto. For the, for the reasons stated at our prior meeting, I will be voting against this motion.
Okay. No, no further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes three to two with Councilmember Specter and Councilmember Saak opposed. Was that item quick enough for you? All right. We're on to item number 10 now, which is Music in the Park.
Good evening. Monica Ren, Economic Vitality Manager. Given the lateness of the hour, and I know that the, you all look a little tired, so I'll keep my comments extremely short tonight, but please know that we are here to answer any of your questions. I, along with Arn Andrews behind me and Shannon Lombardo, were the three-man team in the manager's office that headed up the Music in the Park program this year. As you remember, in the spring, we ended up with an RFP with no responses, and the council directed the staff to go ahead and move forward with soliciting sponsorships and putting forward a Music in the Park program. We programmed five concerts, and really, before you tonight is the decision if you'd like to have staff issue another RFP for next year's concert series, or ask that the staff put on the concert series next year. I do want to draw your attention to the workload that was highlighted in your staff report this evening. So we kind of took a three-prong approach when it came to, to doing all of the work for this event. We started with the three of us in the manager's office and support from the other departments to put together the bands, to put together the contracts, the insurance, and the plans there. Along with the marketing and all the media, we're estimating about 250 staff hours went into the planning of this event. Then we move on to actually executing the event, and it took, we had, we relied heavily on Parks and Public Works. They hung our street pole banners, they put up the stage and took the stage down to about 30 hours for those items. And then we look at each week, we utilized our weekend work team that's there in the mornings, they helped us put out the rope, they helped us set up the tents, and then that took also one management staff to be on site there. What we're estimating is that each concert was about 55 staff and volunteer hours. Some of those hours were by hourly employees, so they were paid. The other part of those hours were by management, and so for those, we all volunteered our time for those concerts. That's kind of a very broad overview of what the concerts were in a nutshell. If you have any specific questions, I'm happy to answer those for you.
Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you very much for your report. I had voted against staff putting these concerts on because of the burden that I thought, and the costs that came to the town, and that if somebody wanted to independently put it on, that would be fine. And so I appreciate the staff report, but what I'm actually curious about is, given the fact that you've done this, is it easier, more economical, less burdensome going forward? Or is it still not economical, and is it still burdensome, or if it is at all? So I'm, I'm trying to get the perspective on, well, we've learned it, and now we can just put it in place, or it continues to be an issue of how much time and effort and money we have to put into this?
You know, it's an interesting question because I think as a staff member, it was a lot of work. We didn't, we weren't able to get rid of any of our other work. We still had our workloads. We did manage it very well between our team. The concerts themselves were very labor-intensive, and I think, you know, we heard great feedback from the community. So as we met with those community members and they came to the tent, it was rewarding to hear what we were delivering to the community, but I would not be honest if I was sitting here and telling you it was not a lot of work, and I, I'm not confident that we could always absorb that work, depending on what the season is and kind of what workload items are in the manager's office at any given time. It's not something that I can guarantee we could always manage as we did this time. And Laurel may like to add more.
I just want to add that the proposal for staff to do this as one of the options for your consideration tonight is really for just one more year to really reestablish this in its traditional sense of being a family-friendly event with a mix of genres. I don't think this is a sustainable event in perpetuity for the town, given our other priorities, but we did want to provide that as an option to you this evening.
Councilmember Specter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are many people in the community who, who felt as though the concerts this year went back to what many in the community had anticipated or hoped for. Those community members also liked the concerts when they were organized and put on by the Arts Commission. That being said, why, why couldn't staff reduce its work by using more volunteer time? I understand that volunteers have to be organized and overseen, but it keeps the staff from having to do all of the legwork. So why couldn't that be an option?
That certainly could be an option. I actually worked for the town when the Arts Commission used to do this, and so I supported, through that department, I supported it, and I do remember kind of the structure of what it was. We also reached out to past Arts Commission members when we started down this road to kind of understand from them, you know, what was the evolution of the event. Some of those members were the ones that were part of the next group that took it on, and, you know, it really does come down to the recruitment of the volunteers, to managing the volunteers, to training the volunteers, and that workload is, is really front-heavy on the work, and when you're doing all of the bands and everything at the same time. So what we started to look at is, we said, okay, budget-wise, we could do, you know, we could look at doing volunteers, but we almost need a position in itself to manage that volunteer group. We could look at doing temporary work, workers. Sometimes those become an inconsistent thing to have a temp agency, and it's quite expensive. So then we said, okay, well, we have our own staff, how can we utilize that? So we, we went through that process. Looking back, we probably could have, you know, used a couple volunteers each time, but to be honest, I think that managing that volunteer piece is a workload in itself.
What did the Arts Commission do before, when it was centered on them? In, in terms of who did the work? The Arts Commissioners, volunteers, staff? Who?
It was mainly the Arts Commission and then the team of volunteers that they built.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Rennie. So I attended all five concerts, and being one of those people who used to volunteer in the good old days, I thought staff did a phenomenal job with it, bringing the product back to what it was, and I really appreciated seeing the whole management team out there working it week after week, and part of me was so grateful, and part of me said to myself, you guys got to work on Sunday, too, and you have families and, and all that. So I do appreciate the sacrifice, sacrifices that you made. My biggest concern would be, you know, for your well-being and your family life and outside, you know, your work-life balance with going through another season. Although, I think, again, with the way you kind of reestablished the program, I like what Mrs. Brevetti said, that carrying it forward one more year, just to continue the momentum, getting our footing, bringing it back to where it was, is probably essential in my viewpoint, and then trying to find somebody to pick it up next year. So those are my thoughts about it. I know we kind of got a late start with the program last year, and we pared it down to five shows, and then there were some barriers to some fundraising late in the season and hiring the bands and things, but it all worked out quite well. But I think this year, we have, we're higher up on the learning curve, and perhaps less resources could be committed, and we can even get more shows and more, more finances raised, so...
Okay. Let me open the public testimony before we get too far into discussion. Do I have any cards? Does Mr. Canale want to say anything? Do I twist his arms?
Hi. So I'm Scott Canale, and Los Gatos Music in the Park. We did this the previous two years. It's interesting to me that you're all talking about it, your impressions of it returning to what it was meant to be, which is somewhat beyond me because it seemed very much this year kind of like what it was. It was the same type of bands. You talked about mixed genre, but it was pretty much rock bands with the exception of One Country Band, so maybe, maybe that was the mixed genre. But in any case, it seemed very similar, just different bands, and, and so just a few things for you to think about as you guys think about what you're going to do. One of the issues we had with volunteers was enforcing town policies. You guys solved that problem by eliminating some of the rules that we spent time enforcing. For example, we weren't allowed to have anybody to have blankets, so we had to have volunteers constantly walking around asking people to pick up blankets. That was an issue for you guys. There were no rules. We weren't allowed to have people put down folding chairs in the town center before 3:00. If they did, we needed to remove them. That wasn't an issue for you guys. You decided that people could leave them at any time in the morning, and in fact, that's what they did. They came at 10:00, 11:00, 12:00, put chairs down, left them there, went to wherever they want. You relaxed sign rules and put banners up all over town. Chamber of Commerce has been wanting to do that, a number of, we just had a big event meeting with a lot of the event organizers in town, and many of them would like to do that. The town kind of relaxed those policies and did it themselves. So I guess what my suggestion would be to think about whether you want to have equal fees... So I guess what my suggestion would be to think about whether you want to have equal footing on events, and if you were going to do an RFP, whether that's going to be similar to the rules that you guys used this year, or not. And also, when you say return to family values, I mean, we had, we had, we had face painting for kids. We had all kinds of things going on for kids, and there were lots of kids at all the concerts that we did. So it's a little bit insulting, actually, to us when you say it's returning to family values, as though we didn't care about families. There were tons of families there every week that we did this. So I'm a bit confused at that, but evidently, you're driving towards something. When we took it over, family-oriented events was just an overall goal that we had, so.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Canale? Councilmembers Spector.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Would, you saw, you experienced the concerts this summer. Would that be the type of concert that someone like you would be interested in organizing?
I don't think that the concerts that you guys, I mean, first of all, I should pause for a second and compliment the town staff on what they did, because they did a fantastic job with a short period of time and made the concerts happen. So to Monica and the whole team, congratulations on that. I mean, you guys did a great job. I don't think that, I mean, there was different choices of specific bands, but the genres were, was identical. In fact, you used one of the same bands that we did, and then some, a lot of the others were similar. They, we reached a little bit higher, just in terms of what we thought the bands were and everything. But similar bands and a similar feel. In fact, it's funny, because you guys talked about family-oriented, but you invited the Chamber of Commerce to host a Beer and Wine Garden, which we were never allowed to do and didn't do. So all of you are saying these words, you know, family-oriented, and it returned to what it was. And I guess my question would be, what do you mean? What does that exactly mean? What are you, what's the goal of the council and staff in trying to do these? I know from talking to different staff members that in addition to the many compliments that you guys got, you also got a number of complaints. And exactly the same thing happened with us. We got tons of compliments every week. People loved the concerts, and there would be a few complaints. And what we would hear from staff is, we had a couple complaints. Not, we had 15 compliments, because usually people don't, the compliments come to you guys directly, like when you're doing the concert, or to us directly. They don't usually take the time to write in and say, wow, this is a fantastic concert. But the complaints, they do. So you hear that more. And so I guess in answer, in answer, potentially, yeah. I mean, it wouldn't be largely different, so.
Let me ask you something, because, and I'm not talking about you personally, but let's say a private organization as opposed to the town. The town did change its outreach, in the sense that it was more limited. And I think that was a positive thing to many members of the community. What is your thought about that limitation of outreach from a more private point of view?
You're talking about the issue that the town has to be more guarded in seeking sponsorships and things like that?
What is it just a sponsorships, I can talk, yes. It's the advertisements and the outreach to come to our concert in Los Gatos.
Oh, you're, I see, you're talking about the marketing of it.
There we go.
And are you saying, are you saying that, so, well, you guys, in general, you, as a town, on everything, don't do as much social media. It's much more limited than what most private people would do, certainly than what we did. I mean, I spent a lot of time on the social media aspect of it, but it was deep in town, not wide. Like, if the San Jose Merc had called and said, we'd like to do an article on Music in the Park, I would have said no, because I don't want an article running in the Merc that's going to drive people from all over the county. I wanted to go deep within Los Gatos, Saratoga, Montesereno, and Campbell. And that's what, when I say "I," I mean our organization. So that's what we were, that's what we were doing, but we were doing more of it. I mean, we were, you know, I'd like to think we were pretty effective in the social media we had. We built up a big following, because there were a lot of people that were interested in what we were doing. I think on your, on the, I mean, we have thousands of people following us on Facebook. We just did the park dance this last weekend and had, you know, thousands of people there, very successfully, and people were, you know, extremely happy with it and everything. So I think that the social media, and in particular, social media, I mean, we don't, the Los Gatos Weekly Times kind of doesn't really cover Los Gatos anymore, unfortunately. But, so, social media and banners and signs are kind of probably the main way of communicating, and so it's just where you target that.
Thank you.
Okay, any further questions? Saying none, thank you, Mr. Canale. Would anybody else wish to address us? Absolutely. You can turn in your card afterward, Larry Maggio.
Good evening, Larry Maggio from 16945 Roberts Road. Pleasure to be here tonight. Had a lot of info for a lot of things tonight. Music in the Park, something I've been pleased to attend this year. I've been attending on and off for the last 10, 11 years. And I've experienced it in a couple folds. Popular bands play, and the community really knows the event that's going on here. And we pack in, we pack in the park. Sometimes we get these other bands that are more localized for the citizens here, and there's a lot of spaces in the park. So what I see, and I just wanted to convey, was is getting the word out, social media is probably the biggest. I know as a commander at a veteran service organization in Campbell, we put on a lot of events, and it's the marketing through social media and the word of mouth from others. And doing it, it's reliable on volunteers. And so with getting an organization of chairman and committee, and having volunteers sign up to do this kind of thing, especially when it's a free event for everybody, that's where you're going to get the most success out of the event. And I experienced that at my organization. I have 50 people volunteering to do something at a local post with the town. I'm sure it's taken probably 100 to 200 people to do an event that we do in Music in the Park. And once they start doing it, and they do it all the time on a routine basis, it goes very smooth and very well. And they identify all the little things that need to be attended to, and it becomes kind of like their own personal policy of doing things. With that, I think this year was kind of a little more low-key, but I think the volunteer staff that was there was right with the town staff doing what they did, and also the volunteers that signed up to do it. Going further with another year, I think that's a good thing. And hopefully, we can get some type of grounding of personnel that'll do it beyond that, whether it's private or we're putting it on as a town. And, but it's going to take a lot of volunteers. And where the volunteers are going to come from, it's going to have to be signed up for them to contribute quite a bit, because there's a lot of work. And that's what I have.
Okay, any questions? Saying none, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so at this time, I'll close the public testimony and come back to council for questions, motions, discussions. Councilmember Sack.
Okay, a couple questions. And before the questions, I want to compliment the staff also. I think what the vice mayor said, the sacrifice on the Sunday, we definitely saw it. And all the positive words of gratitude, I think we all share. So thank you for taking the time to do that. A couple of things that I, questions of staff. So some of the relaxed rules that Mr. Canale talked about, the blankets, the chairs, the banners. Yes, the banners are there, but could you just speak to the blankets and the chairs?
I guess I'll start, since I was there four of the five weeks, and I had to pick up many blankets that were there. The difference that we did allow, we did allow blankets in the shade, and that went to more the purpose of that, and that might be something we do change. If the purpose for not having blankets laid out is because it can kill the grass with the heat. And so if there were actually blankets that were in any of the shaded area, you know, we determined that that would just be the way to handle the blankets. And I believe that was even confirmed with the previous Music in the Parks. So I spent many times where I had to go and say, you know, you need to pick up your blanket. It can't be out because of the sun, and most people understood that right away. In regards to the chair issue, it's always been an issue even for many years previous that we have to deal with. It's pretty difficult to enforce that, and we talked with the previous Music in the Parks in that you're allowed to use the park, you know. So we try to regulate it in the sense that they have to be there at their chair if they want to do it earlier. But setting the time limit, because there's nothing that someone can say, at 2:00, I want to come and enjoy the park. You're telling me I can't enjoy the park. So we have traditionally always allowed those chairs to set up before the time limit, and that happens with Jazz in the Plaz. But you have to be with your chair until that certain period of time. And that's the way we've always enforced that, and that's the way we tried to enforce it this year with the Music in the Park.
And I would just add, with the reduction in the series to five concerts from 10, we thought that would also lessen the impact on the law and the fact that we were only doing five instead of 10.
Okay. And then my other question to you, so right now in the staff report, it's the options presented, are we continue or we outsource it? And is there an in-between? Understanding the amount of work that it takes to put this together, is there an ability to set aside some funds to help town staff so that it's not a reliance on management volunteer hours, but not necessarily giving it up entirely so that you have that one more year to make sure? Well, let's just say, is there an option?
Thank you, and we certainly appreciate the problem-solving aspect of the council question. I think really, you know, when we put our efforts together to make this happen for 2018, we realized that we could actually be very efficient. And so we had a very lean team go in, create a logo with the updated banner policy and process. We followed our own procedures to get banners put up. We were, we had great communication with past involved volunteers who did Music in the Park, so we had a good start on sponsorship. And the reason we're calling the question this evening is because if it is going to come back to staff, we want to get going right away. We had businesses come up to us during the season saying, oh, this is what my money buys me. Sign me up for next year. So we'd like to capitalize on the momentum and get started right away. I think the real issue isn't so much at each concert, because we realized that really all, we identified what the critical mass for volunteers is. It's just the upfront workload and just programming it in. So I think it would be a lot more efficient for us for the 2019 series. But again, that's with certain parameters, that we are still only doing five concerts, that we're really focusing on a mix of genres, and point well-taken in terms of, you know, maybe some of the variety wasn't as apparent as it was intended to be. But really, when it comes down to it, you know, someone's got to be there to stake out the aisleways, et cetera. And I think by the end, we were able to get things set up in a very quick amount of time. And then we do need about 10 or so people to be there with their event shirt on, so that way the public has a go-to person to talk to about concerns that might happen throughout the effort. So I don't, I think Ms. Wren pointed out quite articulately that while it's always great to have members of the public help us volunteer, that can be a huge workload in itself. So thankfully, we had town staff. And if we do need to reach out, we did get some other options in terms of where pools of volunteers might be able to assist us. So I don't really see a hybrid, but I open up to staff for any other thoughts.
I also don't see a hybrid, but I wanted to point out that in the recommendation, the RFP would encompass the marketing that we have built. So what the hope is, is that, I think there's something that gets lost when something's rebranded over and over and over for years. And if, and I think the branding that was developed this year was great. You know, it really started, it started a new brand for Music in the Park. So I think the hope of the staff would be, if it does go out to RFP, that we still encapsulate that, that we still really embrace what is here, so that whether we do it or somebody else do it, it looks and feels the same to our community, so that we're delivering a high-quality product that people enjoy. The five concerts really bookended nicely with the other events we have in town. And so it was, I think, for our staff doing it that entire time, had we been done six, it would have felt unmanageable. I think five is where we really hit our mark. So that would be what we can manage.
Okay. Anybody like to make a motion? Vice Mayor?
I move that we move ahead with the staff for this coming season, one more time, and try to establish it a little further. And we'll see about doing an RFP for the following season. But I think the momentum is good. I think as Ms. Pervetti stated, there are sponsors eager to sign up. And I think leaving that opportunity and going through an RFP process, and it would get too late into the planning season. And as Ms. Wren said, I think we have some momentum with the brand moving forward, and I would like to see that continue.
Do you have a motion? Would anybody wish to second this motion? Okay, I'll second the motion. Councilmembers Spector.
To the maker or seconder of the motion, it's not clear to me, is this motion a motion for staff to go forward with 2019? Or does it also include the RFP?
Thank you, Councilmember Spector. My motion was for staff to go forward without an RFP.
All right, with that clarification, I will be supporting the motion.
Okay, and that's the way I understood the motion also. Any further discussion?
Mayor, just point of clarification that with option B on the agenda, we do also need council to adopt a resolution to enable the sponsorships per our donation policy.
And that's similar to the one we adopted last year?
Correct.
Okay, would the maker of the motion wish to also adopt the resolution?
I would be glad to do so. I was thinking that might have been a separate motion, but we can make that an amended part of the original motion.
Okay, I'll second that. Any further discussion? Any, anything else we need to add to our motion?
One question I have.
Go ahead.
So we did five concerts in 2018. Are we aiming for five again, or are we going to try to do more, depending on the funds we raise? And is the jury still out on that?
We would stay at five.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll go ahead and call a question. All in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Sounds like it passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody. And I guess with that, we're adjourned.